Good evening, everyone. Thank you to everyone here in person, to those who are live streaming, to those who may be joining us from the island of Catalina. I will ask our Board Secretary to take a roll call and establish a quorum for the record.
Thank you. President Craighead?
Here.
Member Lopez?
Present.
Member Miller?
Here.
Member Otto?
Here.
And student member Arroyo?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. And now I will have our student board member lead us in the pledge.
Please stand. Ready, begin.
The Board has been meeting in closed session today regarding matters listed on the agenda. The Board took action on the following items. On item 3.1, the Board voted 4-0 with Dr. Benitez absent to approve to the readmission of student ID number 201127445. On item 3.2, the Board voted 4-0 with Dr. Benitez absent to approve several public employee appointments. I will now ask Dr. An to provide specific information.
All right. Thank you. Well, today marks the kickoff of our 2025-2026 Administrator Promotional Season. There are 18 promotional assignments across levels and departments, and a number of lateral moves as well. All administrative changes can be found on our district website. And at this time, I'd like to pass to Mr. Said, who will begin the announcements.
I will share the promotions at the elementary and TK8 schools level, beginning with Jennifer Kolbe, who will be the principal at Alvarado Elementary; Darren Evans, who's in the audience tonight, who will be the principal at Berchem Elementary; Sharita Clemmons, who will be the principal at Stevenson Elementary; Luke Davis, who is a new hire, who will serve as Assistant Principal at Grant Elementary; Cynthia Novoa, who is also in the audience here, who will be the new Assistant Principal at Hart Elementary; Daisy Garcia, who will be the Assistant Principal at Longfellow Elementary; and last but not least, at our level, Brandon Kent, who will serve as the Assistant Principal of Mir K8.
Thank you.
For our secondary schools, the promotions that we have, we have Dr. Tanya Inover, who will serve as the new principal of Nelson Middle School. And I believe she's in the audience this evening. We have Mr. Michael Crockett, who will join the Wilson team as an Assistant Principal. Dr. Erin Dankes will also be promoted to Assistant Principal at Wilson High School. And we have Carolyn Dahl, who will be promoted to Assistant Principal at Lakewood High School.
I have the pleasure of sharing on behalf of the Office of School Support Services, Susan Caskey, who's moving from Administrative Assistant to Program Administrator in School Support Services; Dr. Jennifer Yates, who's been Lead Psychologist, moving to Administrative Assistant in Student Support Services; Reggie Simon, who's been a psychologist, moving to Administrative Assistant in the Office of Student Support Services; Shereen Joffrin Hill, who's been a teacher on special assignment, moving to Administrative Assistant in the Office of Student Support Services; and David Klein, who's also been a teacher on special assignment, moving to Administrative Assistant, Office of Student Support Services.
All right, and I will bring us home tonight to more promotions. Dr. Jaclyn Williams, who was the principal at Barton, will now be the Director of the Child Development Centers. And Maria Pilar Perosio, who was principal at Hughes Middle School, will be a Director-Principal Supervisor.
Thank you. So if your name was called, I'm going to have you stand now so that we can give you a round of applause. So just a little context on this process. Those names are brought before the Board in closed session, and then, once the Board approves that, then our senior staff hurriedly goes to the phones to let these people know what changes have been made. So for you to be here in the audience is amazing, because I know it was a quick turnaround. It was probably, hmm, I think I have to get in the car right now and leave. So thank you for doing that, and thank you for taking on your new roles. There is one more item that I need to report out that the Board, an action that the Board took, and that was that, on item 3.3, the Board voted 4-0 with Dr. Benitez absent to approve the resignation agreement for certified employee number E00671653. And then I will, I will just mention, for those, you're welcome to stay with us for the meeting, or we understand if you have other plans, because this was sprung on you late today. Uh, let's see. Okay. Adoption of the agenda. We need a motion.
So move. Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes 4-0 with a preferential vote. It's on the agenda, but introduction of student representative is on pause until the fall, when we have our new school year starting. So when we enter the summer months, it's kind of a dark period, as far as I'm concerned, because then we don't have a student representative. So just to reiterate, more students to come in the fall. And now I will have our student board member. She's got something to read and share with us.
Thank you. I'll be sharing a recognition of LGBTQIA+ Pride Month from the district. In recent years, it has been officially recognized by the US government when President Bill Clinton declared June of 1999 Gay and Lesbian Pride Month. Subsequently, in 2011, President Barack Obama expanded the Officially Recognized Pride Month to include the whole of the LGBTQIA+ community. Today, pride celebrations take place globally, emphasizing and commemorating the advancements achieved over the decades. These events range from pride parades, picnics, workshops, and various other activities. Celebrations like these aim to recognize and honor the historical and contemporary contributions of LGBTQIA+ individuals on local, national, and international scales. Thank you.
Thank you, Alana. And now I will direct your attention to the screens. We have our vision in action.
Olbertson, I'm a Teacher Librarian at Hoover Middle School and Tincher K8 Preparatory School. A Teacher Librarian is a library media specialist who connects teachers, students, and families to the information they need and want. We help them connect to the right books, diverse books, so that they find themselves in it to develop their own selves and foster a love of learning. So one of my major accomplishments this year for Hoover was winning the Laura Bush Americas Foundations for Libraries grant. It's $5,000 for Hoover. And my proposal was to create an escape room for the students, buy books for book clubs, and also to help with the curriculum. Winning Teacher Librarian of the Year means that the students, the staff, and families recognize what I do for the school, for the students. I just want to say thank you. My coworkers, the parents, and my administrators, their support really means a lot.
And we actually have another one.
We are celebrating Classified Employees. It's a 23rd Annual Classified Employee Celebration called Class Challa this year. We all see our teachers who are amazing in this school district, but we have all these ladies who are the support staff for the school district. And so we're here to celebrate all in classified employees.
This year, we received 61 Classified Employees nominations. We are excited to now announce a tie for this year's Classified Employee of the Year. Let's hear it for Craig Foster, Melissa Whitecott.
For me, it's been, from the beginning, it started out as I was heavily involved at the school that my kids were going to. So it was kind of a smooth transition into working for the district. And it's just, all I can say is that I'm blessed to work with the people that I work with, and I'm grateful and excited.
Pretty ma- I've been here a while, a little over 25 years, and seen a lot of different changes, a lot of different people. So it's really special and important to me to work for a district that supports people and diversity and inclusion. A little, um, um, speechless. I guess, all the success I have is because of the people I work with. So it would be nice if, like, the whole duplicating department could be here and get the award. It's really a group effort.
And I believe we actually have our Teacher Librarian of the Year here in person. Can you stand and be recognized? And congratulations, and thank you for all your hard work. Uh, let's see, next on the agenda, we have public hearing.
We don't have any speakers on them.
I'm sorry?
We don't have any speakers on the public hearing.
Okay, thank you. Well, seeing as we don't have any, anyone to speak on these hearings, I declare the hearing closed, and we will move on with the agenda. So next, we have public testimony on items listed on the agenda.
Tonia Uranga?
I'm here to talk about a few things. First is Agenda Item 15.1, the approval of the minutes in the March 19th meeting, but there's no hyperlink for the public to look at, and the meeting was about two and a half months ago. I understand it's on consent. However, if you're taking minutes from a meeting the public has access to or is invited to, then you really should be providing the minutes, no matter how long ago it was. Second, the bylaws. The bylaws were very difficult to read, they're small. Can you do something about, even with my glasses, I couldn't read them. I printed it out, it was ridiculous. But I did read this, the bylaws, Conflict of Interest on Item 10, the public statement. "Board members have a right to freely express their personal views. However, board members will respect the authority to choose its representative, to communicate its positions, to abide by established protocols established by board policy." My comment is that if it is an issue regarding my district, I don't care who the Board selects to communicate their position. It needs to be my board member speaking if it's in my district. That's what we elected him for. Third, the Student Outcome Focused Item. "I have many concerns regarding the Community Outreach Plan." First is surveys. Yes, it helps collect data, but only collects data you ask about, not real concerns. Surveys are not dialogue. Please do not amplify these voices with surveys, using surveys, because most community members won't fill them out because they are not asking the right questions. Group meetings were generally, oh, the second, group meetings will generally be one hour. What if it's about a safety issue, or A through G, or a shooting on campus? One hour is never enough. Once you do intros, or speeches from the staff and the board members, then you leave 30 minutes for the community. You should at least look at three, at one and a half hours, at least. Third, board members will develop talking points. I don't want to hear your talking points in a community meeting. I want you to hear my talking points. That's what it's about, the community. And the surveys that you, survey availability is not communicating. It's not a communication strategy. Surveys are tools, talking points are tools. Okay? The next is too much emphasis on dedicated emails, phone lines. What about person-to-person contact? I don't see anything there that has any, that shows it as having value. These are tools, not, but not real communication. It really requires about one-on-one, for it to be one-on-one. Things that you do, like when you run into someone at a market. During events, oh, the next one that you have is during events, personnel issues, personal issues should be directed to the appropriate channel. Well, all parents' issues are personal. They're personal when it comes to their children. And so please, if you could define what personal issues is. Parents have concerns about their children, and it should be, they should be listened to. Customer service, the next one is customer service. Concerns will be tracked and addressed separately without overshadowing the goal of the collective. Well, if you have 30 people there and 10 people have one point, are they not the collective? I don't understand how you, how you measure that. Does everyone have to agree on everything? The next is, I support you, oh, I, I'm concerned about the word script and survey again. They're just tools, they are not real communication. And why can't my board member speak as an individual? We, we elected him to speak. Thank you. There's more, but I will send it in.
Thank you.
Jerelyn Tatum?
Good evening, Jerelyn Tatum, speaking on item, Agenda, Agenda Item 17.1, Bylaws. Just some thoughts on this whole process that began, what, in December? It has been the most, I don't know if it's comical, or if it's embarrassing, or if it's saddening to watch the process that has taken place. And even with the last speaker talking about the font size of the documentation that was posted online. Are you, are you guys aware that there are guidelines that you all are required to follow when it comes to online documentation, especially being accommodating to people who may have visual disabilities? So again, you're violating something, and you're creating barriers for us to even be able to have access to documentation. Yet going through, I didn't go in detail as the last speaker, going through everything, but some of the things that kind of stood out to me that just, I just, I really don't understand. One of the items, "The Board believes that late-night meetings deter public participation." And then you're calling for meetings to be joined by nine. Yeah, it is difficult sitting here by nine, but for those that have been elected, that's what you were elected for. What deters public participation is having board meetings at 5:00 PM, so that people who are working or got to pick up their children, got to make accommodations to get here by 4:45 to actually sign up. That's a deterrent. Something else that's in here that I didn't understand, and I had to read it multiple times. "The Board believes that when no conflict of interest requires abstention, its members have the duty to vote on items before them. When a member abstains, or abstention shall not be counted." This is a public meeting. If a board member abstains, it needs to be in the reporting of that. And if a board member chooses to abstain, isn't that their right as an elected official? Isn't that something written somewhere in Robert Rules of Order? Isn't there a lawyer here who can decide that? Some of these bylaws, that, and these things that have been written, are very arbitrary. They are very, they seem very contrived, and they don't even make any sense. And it's absolutely embarrassing, especially of those of us who have worked with nonprofit organizations or in corporate organizations, and who have written bylaws. Looking at this, I am ashamed of this education institution for what you guys are presenting to the public, and shame on the board members for all of you allowing your voices and authority to be taken away with a piece of paper that becomes a legal document, especially in this climate that we are in, when our right to use our voice is under attack, and you are behaving like our current administration in the National Office.
Thank you. That's all we have for on the agenda.
And we will move to public testimony on items not listed on the agenda.
So for that, we have 14 speakers signed up.
I'm going to motion to allow all speakers that signed up, that we give them the full three minutes and that opportunity to, to give public comment.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes 4-0 with a preferential vote.
So the first speaker is Gloria Quaxiloa.
Good evening, members of the Board. My name is Gloria Quaxiloa de Shivers, and I am both a teacher and a parent here in Long Beach Unified School District. I am here to share a portion of a letter I wrote to Board Member Maria Isabel Lopez regarding my daughter's placement during the school of choice process. Dear Board Member Lopez, I'm writing regarding my daughter's placement at Melican High School in the Compass Pathway Program. Initially, we were thrilled when she was accepted, particularly with the understanding that she would be pursuing her passion for fashion. Throughout the application process, we were not informed of any potential issues regarding her enrollment in the fashion classes once accepted in the compass. When the school counselor visited her middle school to select classes, the fashion class was chosen without any indication that a second option would be necessary. This led us to believe her path was set for the next four years. Recently, I received an email notifying us that due to an excess of students, my daughter was randomly selected for removal from the fashion sequence and placed in the new Arts Events and Enterprise Program. While I appreciate the introduction of new programs, I have concerns about my daughter being a guinea pig in an untested curriculum, especially as she has invested time and resources into pursuing her dream of fashion. She even saved her money from dog walking to purchase a sewing machine, demonstrating her commitment and enthusiasm for this field. Had we known that the, about the uncertainty regarding her placement in the fashion program, we would have considered alternative options during the school of choice process, including selecting a different school or pathway. I appreciate that Board Member Lopez brought these concerns to the district office. However, they informed me that there was nothing that could be done. I was advised to stay in contact with the high school counselor, hoping she might be placed in the fashion sequence in her sophomore year. Meanwhile, my daughter is enrolled in a program she did not choose. It is crucial to note that fashion classes are not available as electives for students in other pathways. If you wish to verify this, I encourage you to ask any Melican student. I did, and they all confirmed that fashion classes are not accessible to students from other pathways. Today, I am asking for transparency in the school of choice process and for the district to make school of choice a choice. Do not move students around without our prior knowledge, and do not pigeonhole them into programs that they never chose. When families make decisions about high school, they trust the district's word. Please uphold your commitment to our students, including my daughter. I would also like to acknowledge Mrs. P., the creator and teacher of the fashion program at Melican High School. Her program equips students with invaluable skills, knowledge, and confidence. This is what my daughter was sold during the school of choice process. I urge you to ensure she has access to the program she believed she signed up for. Thank you, Board Member Maria Isabel Lopez, for your transparency and for your continuous support of teacher and students. Thank you all for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Alexandria Jordan?
Hello, my name is Alexandria Jordan. I'm currently a senior at Wilson High School, and I'm here to express my concerns on the lack of, of health education classes in Long Beach Unified Schools. Students like myself aren't being educated on their bodies, which is a tremendous disadvantage for us. I recently, recently conducted a survey for a class project for my diverse voices and media literacy campaign. In the survey, I received 32 responses back from my fellow students. I mean, my fellow classmates. One of the questions I asked were, do you know anyone who has had a pregnancy scare or has or had been pregnant under the age of 18? 28 out of the 32 students had said yes, and only four had said no. I feel like with this class, if we had the knowledge that this class could have taught us, those numbers would have been drastically different. A health education class would benefit us as teenagers, but also as adults. This knowledge, this is knowledge we need, especially in our early years. Students experiment and try new things, so if we had the knowledge, they, if they had the knowledge they needed, they could potentially prevent some of these things from ruining their lives. It is important for students to be educated not only on their health and body, but also on that of the opposite gender in regards to the possible health risks, sexually transmitted diseases, pregnancy, and more. I understand one of the biggest concerns of this class was, was parent opinion, and I believe with health education, kids are forced to learn things on, without health education, kids are forced to learn things on their own, and not everyone has a trusted adult to go to with any questions. So, so most of the time, kids are learning through negative experiences or not even learning at all. Parents don't want their kids learning things like this at school and prefer to be teaching them at home. But oftentimes, kids are, are scared to go to their parents with questions, either because they are embarrassed, or they fear being judged. Having this class would inform students about their bodies, along with the potential health risks. I'm also aware of the unit being, the Unit of Health Education being taught in biology. And with this, I think that it, just the unit is not enough time for students to fully grasp the knowledge or the information they are being taught. So if it was just a class, if it was a class, then they would have a lot more time to fully understand what they are being taught. All in all, I believe health education should be brought back for students to take. It is, it is more important than one may think, and it is information that we will keep with us for the rest of our lives. Thank you.
Thank you. Jared Davis?
Good evening, Honorable Board Members and President of the Body. My name is Jared Davis, and I'm the parent of a senior at Melican High School. My son, Jared Davis Jr., is supposed to graduate on June 11th. I'm here as a concerned parent, as I was recently informed by my son that he will not have the ability to walk the stage with his classmates next week due to missing assignments in his economics class. During the month of February, my son suffered a head concussion due to lacrosse, a sport he plays for and is proud to represent at Melican High School. Though my son had dizzy spells, headaches, difficulty driving, blurry vision, and sensitivity to loud noises, we found out about his concussion during the progress reports. When we questioned my son about why he was sleeping so much and seen a drop in his well-being, he described these symptoms. Once at the doctor's, he was told that he suffered from a concussion, and we followed up with the school and informed his teachers with the doctor's note. All the teachers were supportive and allowed our son to submit his schoolwork at his pace. What I also need to mention is that my sc- my son has a 504 plan. So being on this plan, in addition to the concussion, has been very difficult. As excited as all seniors can get with graduation, around the corner, my son is not in that position, because all teachers have allowed him to submit his work. Considering his 504 and his concussion, there is one teacher that has declined to allow him to submit his work at a pace that takes into consideration his 504, as well as his condition, which is medically written by a doctor whom has specialized and diagnosed him with a concussion. After several requests to submit his work at his pace and/or makeup, the teacher has refused to cooperate. And with his circumstances and decline to allow my son to walk the stage with his friends that have all been working very hard to get to this important milestone. One teacher has said that he cannot submit his work any longer and walk on the stage because of her portal to submit work has been closed. The one teacher has made no concessions to allow work by, submitted by graduation date of June 11th, or even two weeks after graduation. What I don't understand is why this portal has closed. Where is your policies, where in the policies does it state that in order to receive credit for the class or the course, work needs to be submitted three weeks before graduation? Where in the school district does it state that? If you can show me, I would understand that, and where the guidelines and to be met. However, I've looked in the policies, and I haven't seen this directive. What I do know, there is no student walks in with a zero, students having...
I'm sorry, your time is up, but I'm going to have, I'm going to have somebody collect your information so that we can look into this.
Jennifer Lyons?
Hello, my name is Jennifer Lyons. Good evening, Board Members. Thank you for allowing me to address you today. I am here as a concerned parent regarding the daily wearing of a keffiyeh by one of my son's teachers at McBride High School. Seeing his teacher wearing this controversial garment every single day makes my son feel very uncomfortable. While the keffiyeh has cultural significance for many, it is also recognized as a symbol- While the kefia has cultural significance for many, it is also recognized as a symbol associated with Hamas, which is a terrorist organization whose stated goals are to commit genocide against the Jewish people. The kefia's presence in a public school setting can be especially upsetting to students with Jewish heritage, like my son, and may make them feel threatened and unsafe, especially in light of the recent horrific hate crimes that have been taking place against the Jewish community. LBUSD emphasizes equity and the elimination of systemic discrimination as outlined in its equity policy. To uphold these values, it's crucial that educators maintain a neutral learning environment, free from symbols that could be interpreted as political endorsements. Furthermore, California law protects school district employees' rights to engage in political activities, provided they do not occur during instructional time or involve the use of public resources. Displaying politically charged symbols such as the kefia during class time is clearly not protected. I have reached out to the principal about this, but she was unable to get the teacher to stop wearing it. Therefore, the Jews Belong Beach Coalition and I escalated my complaint to the school district, but the district ruled in favor of the teacher. Finally, we submitted a UCP complaint to the California Department of Education last month and are awaiting a response. I respectfully request that the board consider providing clear guidelines to staff regarding the display of symbols with potential political connotations during instructional time. This will help ensure that our classrooms remain inclusive spaces focused solely on education, not on political indoctrination. Thank you for your attention to this matter.
Thank you. Leslie Lewis.
Good evening. My name is Leslie Lewis. As a parent who's heavily involved in San Kofa Parent Village and a parent lead of my child's elementary, San Kofa, and every event under the umbrella of Black Student Achievement Initiative and a VIPS for the last seven years at least, I was initially not welcomed as a parent to being a VIPS. After scheduling after-school time to help my son's teacher, she didn't, she said that she didn't need help, and actually said that everything was already done. I literally walked down the halls in order to help other teachers. Years later, for a new school year, I told my son's teacher I was a VIPS in September. She welcomed me to help chaperone field trips the next year, making me feel completely unwelcome. As a black parent, I have felt unwelcome. I wonder how welcome my black children are in their schools. There is a climate of anti-blackness, a tension that is embedded in the school system itself that is unsaid but not unfelt. Please make sure my children and all children feel welcome in their schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Judith Nguyen.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Judith Nguyen, and my dau-, sorry, and my daughter attends Emerson Parkside Academy. I'm here once again as a parent and advocate for collaborative co-teaching in LBUSD. Since our last spoke, our petition to expand this model has grown to five hundred signatures from parents and community members who believe in inclusion education. Collaborative co-teaching, where general education and special education teachers work together in the same room, has helped countless students thrive. It supports not just those with IAPs, but all learners by promoting differentiated instruction, inclusion, and peer, strong peer relationships. This program is making a difference, yet instead of expanding it, we're seeing it scaled back just to second grade. The decision runs counter to what we've been, what we're hearing from parents and teachers who see the benefit every day. It also moves us further from the district's stated goals of equity and inclusion. We urge you to listen to the voices of families and educators who are asking for more support, not less. Let's build on what's working. Let's extend collaborative co-teaching through fifth grade, so more students can benefit from this proven model. Thank you for your time and the opportunity to speak up for our kids. Also, I wanted to mention that we are, this is in regards to ADA compliance. We are exactly one year away from ADA compliance deadline, April twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-six. By this date, all websites and mobile applications must meet the WICAG 2.1 AA standards to ensure digital accessibility for individuals and disabilities as required under federal law, just to piggyback on what was said earlier. Thank you.
Thank you. Venus Lyon.
Good afternoon, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm here today as both a parent and a dedicated member of this community. I came from a long line of Long Beach graduates and district employees, and I myself am a proud graduate of Long Beach Schools. When my family moved from Los Angeles three years ago, we intentionally chose to live within the Long Beach Unified School District because we believe the quality of education and values it represented. Unfortunately, over the past year, that belief has been seriously shaken. I'm here to put a face and a voice to my concerns on behalf of my ten-year-old son, who has Down Syndrome, and other students who are currently in the moderate-to-severe special education class at Cleveland Elementary. Despite my efforts to reach out, including multiple emails to district personnel, you sit here, and the board members, I have received no response. This lack of communication is deeply disappointing and concerning. My concern is not only about communication, but about equity. It is clear that students in special education do not have access to the same range of opportunities and resources as their general education peers, whether it's in terms of school choice, class variety, or program quality. While I understand that the special education population is smaller, that should not equate to less attention or lower standards. Over the past year, we lost an excellent teacher who generally cared about our children. Her replacement, while supported, has struggled significantly. It has been a difficult year marked by instability, unmet needs, and impacts that go far beyond academics. To say our children have been negatively affected would be an understatement. When I asked for support and a plan to ensure next year would be better, I was told by the principal to consider school of choice program, to remove my son from his neighborhood school. We live and pay taxes in Lakewood. We are walking distance from Cleveland Elementary. My son knows the kids in the neighborhood, attends birthday parties with them, and deserves to finish his last year in elementary school at his neighborhood school, a place where he feels connected and safe. I'm here today asking for action. I'm asking for an administrative change that ensures that our children in special education receive a safe, stable, and high-quality academic experience, just like other students in the district. I want to restore my faith, the faith my family has held in the district for generations, but that can only happen if our concerns are taken seriously, our voices are heard, and our children are treated fairly. Thank you for your time and allowing me to share. Thank you.
Thank you. Carol Jones.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Carol Jones, and I'm a parent of several students now attending Wilson High School in Long Beach. I'm here today because I believe that there is inadequate supervision of politics in the classroom within LBUSD. During the last presidential election, several teachers at Wilson used their platforms to air their political views. Some teachers even hung posters of their preferred political candidate, discussing the candidates in a manner that clearly demonstrated their bias. A teacher at McBride High School in another part of Long Beach has been wearing a kefia to class on a regular basis since last fall, with no repercussions. A kefia has no religious significance and is not a religious symbol like a yarmulke, a Jewish star, a Christian cross, or a hijab. The kefia has become a political statement and is used today by radical protest groups to demonstrate against the state of Israel. A teacher regularly wearing or displaying one should not be considered acceptable behavior under LBUSD's standards for inclusivity. LBUSD policy has always championed inclusivity, but the permitted behaviors of these teachers doesn't demonstrate that. If even one single student is made to feel uncomfortable or threatened in their own personal views by listening to a teacher praise one candidate and bash another, that is one too many. If one student is made to feel alone or isolated, or worse, targeted by a teacher wearing a kefia, an implicit threat to the Jewish community, this is one student too many. LBUSD regularly issues statements demonstrating their positions of inclusivity towards the LGBTQIA+ community, to the black community, and many other minority groups. Yet the district had no response to a petition that garnered nearly twenty-five hundred signatures, begging it to take action against political bias in the classroom. The district took no corrective action in response to a complaint regarding the McBride teacher continually wearing a kefia. I know that LBUSD would not allow its teachers to display a KKK flag, a Confederate flag, or a Nazi swastika, as these would threaten many local minority constituents. If LBUSD aims to be inclusive, it should then not tolerate kefias or other indicators of political preference demonstrated by its teachers, who are entrusted with acting as special positive role models for our students, but who are also required to provide unbiased and favorable learning environments for all students. Jewish students should not be forced to tolerate a threatening classroom environment. And to be clear, a teacher wearing a kefia is not unprotected speech. It is not protected speech, it is unprotected speech. I ask you to please remedy the situation by requiring the McBride teacher to discontinue wearing the garment, with an apology to any students in her class that may have been offended. I ask that the district provide training to all teachers that educates them on the subject of political neutrality, so that it's clear when promoting candidates that the bias is not permitted, and it's my hope that all the...
I'm sorry, but your time is up.
Okay. Well, I just wanted to thank you. I want all students to feel included in the inclusivity that the district represents. Thank you.
Anaya Younger.
Hello, everyone. My name is Anaya, and I am here as a parent and a leader that supports a collective of San Kofa Parent Village groups, where my students are at Keller and Bixby. Oh, I support the groups at Keller, Bixby, Henry, Newcom, Sato, and have been on the San Kofa Parent Village leaderboard. On May third, as many of you know, we opened the Center for Black Student Excellence, and it was a beautiful ribbon-cutting ceremony. Mr. Zaid gave a great speech that had parents very hopeful and excited about the center and all that we could do, but that has turned since the opening into confusion and disappointment as the center currently operates as an office building for staff, with meetings that are by appointment or invitation only. On the website, it says that "The Center will support the collective good of our community, serving as a hub of excellence, open to all, from our community to our schools, our schools to our community," but the center hasn't felt open in any way. And I ask you all to please consider these questions as we're moving forward. Will the gates be unlocked? During and after school, I went to go visit the center, the gates are locked on the outside. There is no way for you to get in, unless you've been invited. It's not there, you're not able to get in. If, will a buzzer be added so that when you arrive, if you don't have an appointment, you could actually buzz in, like we buzz into the schools, for open access? Will a sign be posted on the outside for visibility to our community that lists the open hours and the contact information? So if people wanted to contact, they could. Will a list of services be shared that are available to the community? Right now, there's no, we don't know, parents don't know what is the center can provide. Will the services that are available be both onsite in the center and then offsite at the school sites for families who may not be able to take their kids over there? And will the center be open in the summer? This is actually a great opportunity to open the doors and invite the community in, and also the students have time to come because they're not stuck in school. I sincerely hope that we can truly open the center as soon as possible. And I wanted to give two quick shout-outs in my last couple minutes. Today, we invited ourselves in by scheduling a field trip for Keller and Lindbergh students to go into the center. Lindbergh students are actually on campus but had never been invited into the center. Dr. Pamela Lovett led a very engaging workshop for us, and Ms. Jamila Jackson was a very gracious host and welcoming. The students were asked to give their input on the center, so thank you very much for that.
Thank you. Jerleene Tatum.
Good evening, Jerleene Tatum, LBUSD parent. She came to keep me calm. I am here to share my public concerns about the Long Beach Unified School District Director of the Black Center for Student Excellence. I am here to make sure that my concerns become part of the public record. Although I have participated as a member of the Black Student Achievement Initiative Advisory Board and on the Planning Committee for the Black Student Symposium for four years, I am here as an individual. I am here speaking as a black woman, speaking as a mother of black children, speaking as an unapologetic advocate for black parents, black children, and members of the black community. As a parent that came to this board in May of 2021 with other advocates, we presented to you all a whole presentation, and in that presentation, it included centering black students. So I've been a part of this process for a while. That year, 2021, is when the board made their commitment. For the last several months, I have experienced one of the most horrible experiences I've ever experienced in working with a Long Beach Unified School District employee, and I've been sitting at the table with y'all for a while. I've expressed my concerns directly to Dr. Spencer. I've expressed it to her superiors. I even walked around with a sign hanging on me with messaging expressing my discontent and the challenges that arose during the planning of the symposium and the ribbon-cutting ceremony. A symposium that would have not happened had black parents not showed up and asked administration, "Where's our symposium?" A ribbon-cutting ceremony that someone attempted, the director, attempted to bar black parents for being participants in. I've been walking around with a copy of the job description, oh, I'm sorry, I was told it's not a job description, the job announcement for the position, and I was informed that there's no job description for the position. So I ask a question. How do you hire someone without a job description? Isn't it an HR standard? Isn't that normal across the industry, whether, whatever industry that be? And if there is no job description, wouldn't that be public tanneman of giving a gift of public funds that aligns with waste and abuse if you don't have a description in order to keep someone accountable for their job? A question that's been asked lately is, "How does the Black Center and BSAI connect?" Well, according to the announcement, it's not a job description. I'm not sure, at least a half a dozen times, Black Center is mentioned, Black Student Achievement Initiative is mentioned. So I just wanted to make sure that was on the public record. Thank you.
Thank you. Lena Schuper.
Good evening, Board Members, Superintendent, and Long Beach Unified School District Community. My name is Lena Schuper. I'm the founder of Jews Belong Long Beach, and I'm speaking on behalf of ACT NOW-K-12, a grassroots coalition advocating for safe, apolitical, equitable, and inclusive K-12 education. First, I want to thank you. There are horrific stories we hear from other districts where Jewish students are physically assaulted, teachers openly celebrate terrorism, and school boards ignore or even fuel the hatred. We have received well over two hundred complaints of antisemitism in San Jose schools and only three in Long Beach. That said, we are here tonight because we must do better. The goal, the goal must be zero. In the last two weeks alone, Jews have been targeted by terror attacks here in the United States. Jews are, were murdered and injured because of hateful rhetoric and ignorance. This violence and raging antisemitism are also budding right here in our schools, right here in this room. If overlooked, minimized, or left unaddressed, it will escalate. K-12 schools have become a primary vehicle for normalizing antisemitic rhetoric. According to the Anti-Defamation League's website, forty-five percent of Jewish students report feeling unsafe or harassed in their school environments. Districts across the state, including LBUSD, failed to respond adequately to antisemitic incidents... failed to respond adequately to antisemitic incidences, incidents, and complaints filed through the Uniform Complaint Process, the UCP. After several CDE appeal determinations, like Case Matter Number 2025-0008 and Case Matter 2025-0040, which upheld the complaints of discrimination against Jewish and Israeli-American students in public schools, LBUSD must pay attention and do better. We've heard horror stories from other districts, like an ESL teacher in Northern California allegedly told an elementary school-age Israeli-American immigrant student whose parents survived, whose family survived the October 7th massacre to kill himself because he was committing genocide. A teacher in Tampa, Tampaless Union told her class that, quote, "There were too many Jews." Lawsuits were submitted in San Jose and Menlo Park about discrimination and neglect to protect the well-being and safety of students. Numerous OCR complaints were pending, are pending, following hostile and unlawful lessons, violent threats, and a lack of accountability to care, act, and protect learners. And tonight, it gave me chills to hear adults, adult men laughing at the mention of Hamas as terrorists. In our district, we see warning signs. Last year, we reported a teacher wearing a kaffiyah, styled as a political symbol, in class following the October 7th Hamas massacre. She continues to do so after numerous complaints. For Jewish children, students in this district, that is not cultural expression. It's a message, a political message, and a threat.
Thank you. Lee Bryce Epstein.
Hi, good evening, Board. I'm Lee Bryce Epstein. I am a proud parent of--
Leave me alone.
Hi. Excuse me. Okay. Lee Bryce Epstein, proud Poly parent.
Excuse me, excuse me. We're going to just have the timer reset, so that you have your full three minutes.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
So, we've been in this district, and now just celebrated our 10th year living here. So, our, our sons have been through Listerius Elementary, Hughes Middle School, Marshall Academy, and now Poly. They've been involved in a number of sports, about every music program possible, about every extracurricular they could get their hands on. And I will say, I was, and still am, like really sad to share their continued annual disappointment in the district's failure to recognize Jewish American Heritage Month, which just ended. And just ended with a notable letter that was sent to superintendents, county and district superintendents, from the state, from Tony Thurmond. I just want to note that he did send out, in addition to recognizing at the end of the month, that we concluded Jewish American Heritage Month with the murder of two young people outside a Jewish cultural event in Washington, DC, and an attack on a group of peaceful members of the community in Colorado. That, in this letter cited not only, you know, that these were important messages that needed to go out to students, but that also, in part of, what he says, "Preparing pedagogical opportunities for young Californians to provide them with historical context and prepare them for an ever-changing world. Educators who recognize Jewish American Heritage Month in their classrooms and school communities may find themselves faced with questions about current events and Jewish culture." Even provided some sample resources, and then reminds teachers to attend Summer Institute of California Teachers Collaborative for Holocaust and Genocide Education, et cetera, et cetera. It's, it's a shame, what we would call a shanda, that the district continues to remain silent about an important minority. We're all here. Almost every parent who has spoken so far is trying to represent what is effectively a minority population in the school. The Black community, the community that requires more special education support, the Jewish community. And we're just asking for all of our communities to be represented at an equal level. Thank you.
Thank you. Dasol Mashaka.
Chess makes kids smarter. And I am Dasol Mashaka. I'm a chess coach in the Long Beach Unified School District for five elementary schools and one Saturday special school. And I have about 237 students in that program. And 14 of those students, I put on a national chess team. And some of those will be playing in a national chess tournament in Las Vegas this coming Friday. Some other students will be participating in Orlando, Florida, July the 11th, in another national tournament. A lot of these students are in their first year of my chess program. The, I want to thank the board for the opportunity to make the public more aware that we have an academic enhancement program called chess. Those schools that participate, Holmes Elementary, Riley, Bret Hart, Roosevelt, and Signal Hill, and the San Kofa Saturday Program. And when we talk about chess for senior citizens as well, it reduces the risk of Alzheimer's and dementia. And the reason chess works the way it does is because most of the time, we use one side of our brain for the creative side, another part for the more technical and problem-solving side. But when we use, when we play chess, we use both sides of the brain. So instead of going, "Mm, mm," it goes, "Brrr." Okay, so, the, some of the benefits are problem-solving for students, math, focus, behavior, and self-esteem. In behavior, for example, I had two boys at the start of the program. They would get so upset when they'd lose, they'd knock all the pieces off the board. Now, if you come to the class, they sit there as model students. The parents and teachers are noticing the difference. We made a video of the end-of-the-year chess tournament that we have, and the board has received the link to that video. And if anybody wants that video, I'll give you my business card, my number, cellphone, 310-722-0863. Another example, I had a Los girl that's undersized, very quiet, not participating in a lot of school activities. And now she's winning in chess, and the teachers talk about how she's speaking out in class. So I would like for all of you to get an opportunity to see the video, contacting the parents, or my number is, again, is 310-722-0863.
Thank you. Jessica Caveo.
Good evening, Board members. I am Jessica Caveo, and I will be picking up where my ex-husband left off regarding our son, Jared Davis. Where in the school district does it state that? If you can show me, I would understand that there are guidelines to be met. However, when I've looked at your policies, I haven't seen this directive. What I do know is that no student walks in with a zero. Students having some coursework and showing should have at least a 40, which is a pass. Your policies are broad and do not give a hard deadline about when the work must be submitted, whether that's two weeks before the deadline or two weeks after school is out. All teachers have worked with my son to help him get to this milestone. My son didn't opt to have a concussion in one class and not in his others. See, all his teachers are willing to support and help my son beyond their classrooms and into his well-being. One teacher only has taken a different stance, and I'm not clear if that's her own personal stance or it's the district's policy stance she's upholding, because to date, I have not seen that in your policies. And I'm asking for a copy of that policy, so I can ensure this is a fair process applied across the district. If you can give me a copy and point to the policy, I would appreciate it. I also would appreciate for my son to be allowed to walk across the stage on June 11th with all his peers to celebrate this milestone. I acknowledge that he will need to complete the assignments to receive his diploma. But one class he has some assignments missing for shouldn't dictate being able to walk the stage. I ask for your support and understanding, as this is as important to my son as it is to our family, when we all celebrate his effort and hard work for the past four years. I would also like to add that it is disheartening how difficult it is to get anyone at Milliken to hear me and let me advocate for our son. Thank you.
We're done with PubCon.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have reports on superintendent advisory groups. We'll start with the Business Budget and Policy Development Group. I serve on that group alongside Dr. Benitez. He's not here this evening. So I will report that the policies we're working, or the, yeah, the policies we're working on are bylaws, and we'll be doing that in other parts of the agenda. And once we are, once we have completed the bylaw adoption, then we will resume with other policies. So, next, we have Instruction and Student Learning Supports. Ms. Lopez.
Yes, the total amount of contracts for special education services that are up for approval tonight is $1,710,725. And these contracts are renewals for services that support students with disabilities. The services include behavioral and instructional aids, speech services, occupational therapy, and mental health services. These contracts are necessary in order to ensure students receive the services legally mandated by their individual education programs. Contract agencies are responsible for providing the required trainings for their staff as specified in each contract conditions. For the 2025-26 school year, LBUSD is developing training modules that the non-public agencies must share with their staff prior to starting services. The training modules provide comprehensive information to the agency staff to ensure alignment with district expectations and contractual requirements. The training emphasizes compliance with legal and ethical standards, upholding the integrity of services, and maintaining a strong student-centered approach. Staff are equipped with the tools and knowledge necessary to support diverse learners effectively while meeting classroom and school expectations. Once the training is provided, the agency provides verification certifying that each of their staff has completed the training successfully. And that's the end of my report.
Thank you. Next, we have Workforce Development. Mr. Miller.
I have no report today.
Thank you. Next is Student Outcome Focused Governance. Oh, Mr. Otter, you want to report on that?
I would just say that we had a special session earlier today where we talked about our goals and our guardrails, and we had a specific training in that area. And we continue to meet and implement our Student Outcome Focused Governance, and we're doing it on a monthly basis.
Thank you. Yes, and I will just add that our implementation timeline team continues to meet weekly, and we discuss things like the quality of our monitoring, how we're going forward with the items laid out in the self-evaluation tool, that sort of thing. And then later on in the agenda, we'll talk about our bylaws. So, next, we have the Consent Calendar. So we need a motion.
Approval. Second.
Discussion?
I, I do have questions on Item 15.1, the approval of minutes for the March 19, 2025 Board Meeting. I guess I have a few questions there. So first question is, why are we approving minutes for March 19th in June? So, and then can we get them prior to that? Can we get them in a more timely fashion? But also, on those minutes, we have a number of individuals, including Doñoranga, Phyllis Arias-E. López, Jerleene Tatum, Juan Ovay, who spoke against the adoption of the Board Bylaws, and that's not included in the minutes. What's included in the minutes, and what reads is, "Spoke on the Board Bylaws." And I think that can be misleading, because while they did speak on the Board Bylaws, they spoke against the Board Bylaws. Also, on Number 14 of the, of the minutes, I recuse myself voting on the substitute section. It does only say that I recuse myself, but it doesn't specify, I was very clear that I was recusing myself, because one of my adult daughters is subbing in the district, and I like that noted in the, in the minutes, as I think it's a, we should have, we should have, we should include that the speakers that were speaking on the bylaws were specifically speaking in opposition to them. So, so what, so I wanted to bring that up, and I do have, again, the question as to why we're just now approving the, the minutes for, for March, for the March 19th meeting.
Well, Mr. Riel, were you going to address that? Or are you just adjusting your microphone?
Okay. Okay, so we don't know why. I, I just think it, it's just fair to have the minutes in a timely fashion, so months later, you know, I, I think then it would take people to go back to the videos to see what, what was said in, in a meeting. But, but I definitely like those corrections made on that, on those minutes.
Certainly, in terms of, just a response on the minutes, yes, we try, staff tries very hard to make sure that those are updated as quickly as possible, following the meetings. There have been some challenges in the office, just in terms of some support staff that have been going through a few things. So that's likely one of the reasons for the delay. But we do try endeavor to make sure that those minutes are done in a timely fashion. So that's the response in terms of the timeframe. I did receive and understood your comment related to the consent calendar to make sure to include the purpose for your recusal and the specific incidents. So that one would certainly be modified and amended to reflect that change.
I, I think we should also modify the section where the speakers who came to speak in opposition of the Board Bylaws, that that's included there. I mean, we had one here tonight, actually talking about not having those minutes available to the public. But I think it can be misleading not to include, just to say that they're here, they spoke about Board Bylaws. And I'm going to move on to, to Item Number 15.4, the approval of math requirement waivers for graduating class of 2025. If someone can just explain this, this waiver, because we also had another family here talking about their son not being allowed to walk down graduation.
I can speak to the issue on the math waiver. Not, that's not related to the parent who spoke earlier. On this issue, so, the state requires for a student to graduate, one of the requirements is that a student completes two years of mathematics. Our Board of Education has a policy that students must complete four years of mathematics. We have had practice that if students do not complete the four years, they do complete the two years, and meet these other requirements that we do bring before the board, the opportunity to waive those requirements so that students can still graduate. the opportunity to waive those requirements so that students can still graduate. So this is past practice. We've done this every year. We bring forth to you those students who meet the state requirement, not the district math requirement for you to vote for them to be able to graduate.
And Mr. Moskowitz, would it be accurate to say that for students who don't pass algebra the first time, it's beneficial for them to be able to take algebra again? Which means that they might only be, they might take, they might need the four years to pass Algebra I and maybe Geometry or maybe Algebra II, but that the waiver would actually be beneficial to some of our students?
Students have many reasons why they're not able to complete four years of mathematics. It's very different. I couldn't speak here to every single reason why. You mentioned one. That could be one, but there's many reasons why. So because they've met the state requirements, we bring before you those students who have met state requirements, not yet the district four-year requirement for you to approve that waiver.
So it would be beneficial for our students to receive the waiver? Because they are taking math, it's just maybe not the sequence that has been set up for the general population.
The benefit is that these students, if approved, these students will be able to graduate next week.
Beneficial.
Until confirmed they satisfied the state requirement, correct?
I do have two more questions. Item 15.4 also, on the proposed law inaction course, the description includes teachers must hold the appropriate CTE credential. Unlike the intermediate songwriting course that states teachers must hold the appropriate single-subject music credential. I asked this question at the last board meeting. Does this mean that, so in this case, law inaction does not require a teaching credential? And I asked this question last meeting regarding another approval of course and we weren't sure what the response was there. So I'm hoping there is a response here now.
I can get us started and perhaps Dr. On can add into this. The CTE courses that are taught within our district do require a CTE credential issued by the State of California through the Commission of Teacher Credentialing, similar to our other courses. There are unique credentials to unique courses, so we would abide by those CTC guidelines.
So different than obviously the teaching credential that all the other teachers are required to have. Yes?
Correct.
And on the 15.8, the contract with core districts for $343,375 to provide support for district improvement efforts, including engagement in the long-term planning for high school redesign. At the last meeting, we approved a contract with them for over $300,000. And I did raise a concern that our superintendent sat on their board. I did ask legal if there was a potential conflict of interest. But since we're now together approving, well, last contract and this one, about $700,000, I just want to confirm that there is no potential conflict of interest there.
There is no potential conflict of interest.
Okay. Thank you.
Unless there is further discussion, I'll have our board secretary take a roll call vote.
Thank you. Member Lopez?
So I vote aye with the exception of items 15.1, which are the minutes, and items 19, 20, and 21 on 15.6, which are claims filed by employees as I need additional information. Thank you.
Yes.
Yes, there is a process in the board bylaws that permits, especially for the consent calendar, for a no vote on specific items within the consent calendar. Otherwise, then you have to vote against the entire consent calendar. So the compromise to keep it on the consent calendar is that a member can identify which of those items that they would vote no on. That way, items don't have to be separately pulled from the consent calendar, but the motion would be marked as to which items either that the member voted no or abstained, which is really also what Ms. Lopez was talking about for the correction of the minutes, back to the item in which she abstained on that one particular item in March.
It's the current policy, not the proposed policy.
Mr. Strumpf is in the room? That was approved previously, yes. Specifically with that language in there to be able to do that on the consent calendar.
Member Otto?
Aye.
President Krikhead?
Aye.
Member Miller?
Aye.
And student member, a royal preferential vote?
Aye.
Thank you. That passes.
5-0?
5-0 with certain abstentions. Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry. 4-0 and a preferential vote by student member.
Okay, and then the record would reflect those exceptions, I imagine. Okay, so we will move on to item 16.1 under Staff Report for our budget update and LCAP draft number two. Ms. Takahashi, I happened to catch you at an inopportune time.
Good evening. I'm happy to be joined by Ms. Margaret Lamb and Dr. Lucy Salazar in this presentation of budget update and LCAP draft number two. I must say for the budget, which is a very technical document that we have submitted to the board, there is a comprehensive memo that is attached to the budget. And so for anyone who wants to take a look at that document, it provides more detail than that which we're providing tonight. And so we've tried to make something very technical, very accessible to the public. So we'll be asking the board to adopt the budget in the LCAP on June 18th. And that's a statutory requirement, that that be done before June 30th. We must say, though, that the budget adoption is just a point in time. It's nestled in a year-long financial reporting and budgeting process. It begins with the governor's budget in January, where the governor releases his initial proposal to the state legislature on the state budget, which includes district revenues. So those are the first numbers that we get. It is followed by the mayor revision that we got just a few weeks ago, which is updated numbers based on new data that the state has on its revenue and on its economic condition. And so the mayor revision is what informs our budget. And the state legislature has until the middle of the month to adopt its budget. So if revenues to the school district are materially different, we have 45 days to revise our budget. And then in the December timeframe, we bring a report called the First Interim, which is basically our execution of the budget. What does our revenues look like? What are our expenditures look like? And it's an opportunity to just recalibrate where we are. And then we do a second interim in March. And then we do our estimated actuals, which is how we think we're going to end up in the year, and that informs the budget. So it's a fairly lengthy process of budgeting and financial reporting. And what's important at every one of these checkpoints is that we are continually updating our financial projections, not just for the current year, but for the two years following. And that's really the value of all these checkpoints in the budget. So themes for this budget and the LCAP adoption. Our state revenues reflect a slowing California economy, facing great uncertainty, I don't think I need to say, state that we are facing fairly uncertain financial times, particularly from the impact of recent federal policies, which I'll go into a little bit. Our enrollment, which dictates our revenues, continues to decline with attendance rates that have not yet rebounded since the pandemic. 2526 will be the second year of district deficit spending. And we'll see an acceleration of that deficit spending in the following years. In our LCAP, we will be going into the second year of a three-year LCAP. And it continues to demonstrate the alignment between the state board and strategic plan goals. So as I stated, the budget is based off of the governor's mayor revision. The governor's mayor revision addresses a $12 billion state deficit. So the governor's office stated that current year revenues were exceeding expectations, but the following year, which is the 2526 year, those revenue expectations were lowered. And so with higher cost estimates, they're facing a $12 billion state deficit. And there are many, many multiple strategies that the governor proposed to reduce that deficit, including use of deferrals, that means delaying payments, use of reserves and budget reductions. But education was protected and he did not propose significant reductions to education, though we only get the statutory 2.3% cost of living adjustment. And revenues do not reflect the full risks to the California economy. We know the risks that are out there, stock market volatility, federal policies, tariffs, immigration, which affect supply chains, labor supply, tax revenues, gross domestic product, consumer confidence, as well as just the cuts to federal programs, which the state, there's a question whether a state is going to be able to backfill, which just creates additional pressures onto the state budget. So even the late filing tax deadline that LA County has until October just brings, just complicates budget projections for the state. So there's a number of reasons why the state is facing such uncertainty in its budget. So let's just take a look at the revenue for our budget. All operating funds is 1.3 billion. We have multiple funds. The general fund, which is our largest, we have a general fund unrestricted of 66, almost 67%. Our general fund restricted, about 24%. We have a robust cafeteria fund, about 4.3%, $55 million. It's very robust because of the universal meals, which thankfully the governor has included again in his budget, which means every child can eat without cost. We have a child development fund, which is our Head Start CDC programs, 4.6%, $60 million in the adult education fund, which is about approximately 2.2 million. So you'll see the general fund is most of the operating budget and that's why we focus so heavily on that fund. Let's see that the general fund revenue is comprised of the local control funding formula. It's just 70% of our general fund. And that's why we again focus so heavily on the local control funding formula. And the local control funding formula also drives the LCAP. We have federal funding at almost $70 million. We have other state revenues, approximately 254 million. And then other local revenues is 41.3 million in this budget. So again, we will be heavily focusing on LCFF and those assumptions that we use in determining how much we're going to get in LCFF. So it's really important is the assumptions that we utilize when coming to our revenue projections. We want to be very clear and transparent that these are the assumptions that underlie our revenue projections. They are projections. They are not predictions. They're the best assumptions that we have based on what's out there in terms of planning assumptions. And so for next year, as I stated earlier, 2.3%. And you'll see the COLA trend over time is just wild. It's gone from 13.26% in '22, '23, all the way down to what we got this year, 1.07%. And then we're trending around 2% to 3% moving forward, which I would say would be considered normal in terms of COLA. Our enrollment decline between 2.2% and 2.7%. We have just over time experienced significant enrollment loss, which I'll talk about in a bit. And these projections are based off of live birth data that has lagged five years to project our kindergarten enrollment, as well as how we're retaining our students, the rate in which we're retaining our students as they move from grade to grade. Our attendance rate projections, we're using 91.85%. Say before the pandemic, we are trending at 95 to 96%. It dipped precipitously during the pandemic to 89% and we've gone up. But we had planned on a much more robust rebound in terms of attendance rate. We had a attendance rate of 91.5% in '24, '25. We had projected higher than that and we had projected a 1% increase to that in subsequent years. So we've had to bring down our estimates of revenue based off of what we're actually seeing in attendance. Our duplicated pupil percentage, which is our economically disadvantaged English language learners, foster and homeless youth populations. This drives our supplemental concentration grant funding. We're using the percentage of 63.7%. Again, this has gone down. A few years ago, it was 70%. So we'll see that we've got some demographic shifts happening in the area. Perhaps affordability, but demographic shifts happening such that the duplicated pupil percentage is being reduced at a much faster rate than our actual enrollment decline. And here just illustrates our enrollment decline from a high of 96,000, over 96,000 in 2002, 2003, to next year's enrollment of 61,267. It's about 35%. 33,600 students. And just to put that into context, 33,000 students, school district would be considered a very large school district in the state of California. So that just puts our enrollment loss into perspective. And we don't see that enrollment loss abating as the LA County enrollment is projected to continue to decline for at least the next decade. Just on the federal funding side, and this is still being discussed heavily as we just see in the news, the president's proposed budget for '26, it maintains special education funding and Title I funding, but eliminates some entire programs. So Title III, which is included in our budget, language instruction for English language learners, 2.4 million in our budget. Migrant education, approximately 200,000 in our budget. And adult education, approximately 500,000 in our budget. So there's a lot of discussion to be had at the federal level on these programs, but that is what is proposed. We have included these programs in our budget. And well, once we have more information on what is actually passed in the federal budget, we'll make the adjustments as needed. So that is it for the revenue side. I'm going to pass it over to Margaret to talk about expenditures and ending balances, but I can pause here if there are any questions. but I can pause here if there are any questions with respect to revenue. Okay?
Really quick, I just want to make sure that I have the numbers correct. So you're talking about potential funds that are going to be eliminated due to the federal government from Title III, migrant education and adult education. That totals about 3.5. Did I do that math right?
3.2.
3.2?
Yeah.
Okay. Just curious. Thank you.
Okay.
Good evening, members of the board, members of the community. I'm here to present the expenses for the '25, '26 budget. So '25, '26 budget has a total expenditure in the general fund of about 1.3 billion, with personnel costs accounting for 74% of the total. This includes your certificated salaries, your classified salaries, and the corresponding employee benefits, followed by the services and operating costs of about 18.5 million. This is mostly attributable to professional services contracts, which includes special ed-related ELAP, after-school, home-to-school transportation, LCAP and IT-related contracts. And then the next part of where we're spending our money, sorry, is the 6.1% in books and supplies. It is important to note that a portion of it, about 12, close to 13 million, is in Title I as a placeholder for their carryover as we plan for how we were going to spend that carryover. Some of the expenses, expenditure highlight is the STIRS contribution of 19.1. This remains the same as this year because it's statute. But unlike STIRS, CALPERS is actually updated depending on CALPERS investment result every year. We have 26.81 projected for '25, '26. This is already fixed because the CALSTRS board have met last March, around early April, I think, this year. But it's expected to grow up to 27.8% by '27, '28. Our health benefits have increased by approximately 3.5 with average per participant cost of about 27,192 for full-time employees. And then our special ed education annual cost continues to increase by 15 to 20 million a year. In '25, '26, we're projecting to have a contribution to special ed of about 166 million, and it's projected to grow a little over 201, to be exact, by '27, '28. There's no salaries increase assumed in this budget as the district is still in the process of engaging with our labor partners.
I'm sorry to cut you off there. I appreciate the percentages and breakdowns per employee. Do you have the aggregate number on what those totals are? Just curious.
For the total, for the, for the... Oh, I do have it. So for CALSTRS, it's 135.2 million. And then for CALSPERS, it's 35.3 million. So this next slide is just a different way of looking at our expenditure budget. And I think this one aligns to how we're running our programs. So about 990 million is reflected in our LCAP Plan of Action, which will be discussed in succeeding slide. There's a remaining expenditure budget of about 350, which is funded by federal and state categorical program, which includes the 83 million in SELPA Plan for special ed. Just on a side note, special ed is actually a 250 million program in the district. One-third of it is being paid for by federal and state funding. And then the rest of the program is being paid for out of the LCFF baseline revenue. And then we also have our ELAP and after-school, which is, our ELAP assumes the governor proposal of us moving from a Tier Two to a Tier One district. And then it also includes some one-time funding for the Golden State Pathway Program, as well as the remaining arts and music instructional block grant. So this is the ending balance. In '25, '26, our general fund unrestricted revenue is projected to be at about 873 million, with total expenditure at 973. This is expenditure and contribution combined. This reflects a deficit spending gap of about 100 million. The second consecutive year where our expenses exceeds our revenue. We're using reserves for '25, '26 to cover the shortfall while we're spending, between what we're spending and what we're technically bringing in as funding. There you go. Okay, there. While deficit spending may be necessary right now just in order to maintain our essential programs and services, the depletion of the district reserve triggers some concern about our fiscal stability and program sustainability. The growing gap between revenue and expenditure underscored the importance of identifying solution earlier rather than later to restore a balanced budget. So there are various strategies that we could use as a district to address the deficit. One is the district's out-year projection for attendance is an average of 91.85%. Aside from the learning loss, just to put it in context, the estimated revenue loss for every day that a student is absent is about $75 a day. By focusing on increasing student attendance, we could generate more revenues and close part of that deficit gap. This means not just encouraging daily attendance, but also supporting student engagement and addressing barriers that keeps our student from being in the class. Another way of addressing it is program prioritization that aligns to district goal. Given our shrinking resources or limited resources, it's essential to prioritize programs that clearly aligns with our district goals and that are supported by data-driven evidence of need. This involves careful review of all programs to ensure investing in what best supports our student achievement, equity, and well-being. Another strategy is by natural attrition. With enrollment continuing to decline, it's critical that our staffing and resource allocation reflects this trend. We recognize that not all cost decrease is a one-to-one basis with enrollment, but we must ensure that those that are directly tied to it are adjusted accordingly. This may include utilization of natural attrition or reassigning staff in a higher need area. Efficiencies and cost containment. The district continues, I think it's part of our practice, to actively refine our operational processes to identify efficiency and contain costs. We also have been very strategic in use of the one-time funds. That's why the district has been able to build up its reserve across few years is because they've been very careful and strategic in like, where do we use our funds? But we must continue this practice and leverage these funds to ensure that what we create as a program are sustainable and for long-term rather than just temporary fixes. And then it's important that we use these funds to actually bridge gaps without creating ongoing commitments. But just to bring us back and center us back to the students, having said all of those a little bit sad facts, the budget continues to be a reflection of the district priorities and goals. It demonstrates how we're keeping students at the center of every spending decision we make. And the succeeding slide, which would talk about LCAP, would help demonstrate that. Although the district strategically leverages state and federal funds to support key goals in our LCAP, like federal and state programs for English learners, students with disabilities, and foster and homeless youth, 75% of all our budget is actually included in the LCAP Plan of Action that supports our goals, our district goals. This, now I transition my slide to Dr. Salazar, who will provide an update on the LCAP. But before I do that, do you have any questions? Or will that come later?
Just one quick one. Repeat that last statement that you said, what percentage?
Seventy, wait, sorry, 74, 75. 74, oh, 74% of our total expenditure of like 1.34% is actually listed in our LCAP Plan of Action.
All right, you know, 1% could be...
Sorry, sorry, 75.
75, all right, great, thank you.
All right, thank you so much, Margaret. Good evening, everyone. And again, good evening to our community that is viewing us this evening. I'm here today to share with you the second draft of the LCAP. Just a reminder, we do have this posted on our webpage. And before I move on, I want to give thanks to the team that has been helping with this process. Of course, to Margaret, who's done such a beautiful job of taking something so complex and really making it chewable, I'll say for my own, for myself, something that's so complex and really making it understandable for many of us. But also to George Tsai, who's also here in the audience behind us, and Carmen Hernandez. But last but not least, I want to give special thanks to, I'll say, someone who's been so supportive and really guiding us through this process that's new to several of us as a team, is Jim Suarez. Many of you know him, and he has been very supportive in this process. So today I want to share with you Draft Two, and because it really helps us emphasize again our continued alignment to many of the seminal work that we have started here within our district. Work that has been generated through community feedback, community engagement. And so some of these slides will look very familiar to you, and I think that's purposeful and intentional, not only for us, but also for our community to know that we are not changing the game plan, we are not changing the playbook. We are sticking with what was a robust engagement activity last year and years prior. And so we hope that not a whole lot of this presentation will be new to our community. And instead will be just enhancements and how it is that we are refining and bringing our LCAP closer to completion in its final format. So let's talk a little bit again to some of our alignment. And again, there was a whole discussion earlier today around guardrails and board goals. And so we anticipate that this will have some impact on how we create this slide moving forward. And so, but for now, as it is, it's how we progress through the second year of this LCAP. And knowing that our intentional alignment started not this year, but has been a process that we've undergone for a few years now. So we are making sure that our students that we are wanting to target are being supported through all the work that we do across our district and who we're talking about specifically is our English learners, our students with disabilities, our Black students, our Black African-American students, our foster youth. And so we want to make sure that we're building coherence, that we're building equity and accountability more than anything. Again, just a reminder again for our community. And so as we expand on this concept of alignment, we have our nine LCAP goals. And the first five really are aligned to what started a lot of our work in our district around the excellence and equity policy several years ago has really been guiding us. And so while the first goal is high-quality learning for all students, we see how we're intentionally focusing many of our targeted groups with Goals Two, Three, Four, and Five. And we presented these last year, ooh, I'm sorry, there's a little bit of overlap there, with Goal Six being around engagement, Goal Seven, equitable and liberatory district, Eight, transformative change, and Nine really targeting what we call Equity Multiplier, which is specifically for our two schools, Reed and EPHS, or Educational Partnership High School. But I think the key takeaway as we look at these nine goals is that it's not just goals that are operating in silos. I hope that it's resonating, and it's almost like we keep hearing about these goals because it's really bleeding into the rest of our system, and the work is being aligned. And so it's embedded within our system work, and it's guiding our department work, I know personally. And it's also guiding work at the school sites. And it's also guiding, of course, how we are speaking when we are here. And so I want us to take a look a little bit closer at examples of actions because what is new in the LCAP Draft Two is now that we now have some budgeted, some budgeted allocated to each of these actions. And so what we have here is Goal One, High Quality Learning for All Students, which is Goal One. We see that we have invested a total of $517.2 million, but it encompasses nine different actions with the first three actions really being funded at about $464 million, which is part of our base, or if you will, the bottom of the triangle that we often refer back to. And this is in reference to people services, instruction, and instruction-related services. But overall, Goal One actions include continued access to wellness centers. And so you'll see as I click through how they align to some of what our community expresses priorities, but also more specifically, what are the dollar amounts? What is the budget, the allocation in our budget to each of these actions, each of these nine actions? And so you'll see that wellness centers is a continued action to address high-quality learning for all students, but equally library services, psychological services, or mental well-being for our students, ensuring that there's college advisors for our students, dual enrollment, and more importantly, standards-aligned curriculum and instructional technology. So those are some of the important actions taking place in Goal One. And then we go on to Goal Two. And we will be going through each of the goals this afternoon or evening. But just a reminder to our community that we do have what we call a comprehensive slide deck, that if, once you view it in the Google Slides format, we mentioned it last year, I'm sorry, last presentation, and it really goes in-depth into each of these goals. But today we are here to really highlight the way each action has been budgeted. Excuse me. So Goal Two is High Quality Learning for Black Student Achievement, which dedicates $2.6 million. And again, it supports Black student achievement through the actions in alignment with not only our excellence and equity policy, but our strategic plan, specifically Strategy Four, which is elevating and centering Black students and families. These investments include our San Cofo Saturday Academy and programming, supporting Black student unions, mentorship programs, and again, the celebration of the Center of the Black Student Excellence that had its beautiful ribbon-cutting ceremony. But these supports are, more importantly, focused on improving A-3G completion, S-Back performance, and graduation outcomes for our Black students moving into next school year. Goal Three, High Quality Learning for English Learners and what we refer to as LTAL, which is Long-Term English Learners. And our English learner population is always a population that we want to remain focused on. The goal includes $4.6 million in targeted support. And for '25, '26 school year, you'll see that these actions include newcomer supports as well as continued interpretation and translation services, not only for students, but more importantly, for our families to be able to access the education of their students. LPAC testing coordinating, which is one way in which we keep accountability to the progress of our EL students, and of course, coaching to our school sites through the English learner specialists. So again, these efforts are to accelerate the language acquisition and the academic achievement of our student population that we refer to as English learners and LTALs. Goal Four, High Quality Learning for Students with Disabilities represents one of our larger investments, as Margaret shared earlier, at the tune of $189 million, which is allocated again for these students that are in need of specific supports. It includes funding for classroom teachers and aides, but also psychologists to be able to do their annuals and their triannuals, speech and language services, and student transportation. And as we continue to work, we remain focused on closing gaps and increasing opportunities for all students, but especially in this goal for students with disabilities so they can thrive in every and any classroom setting. Okay, Goal Five, High Quality Learning for Homeless and Foster Use, with a little bit less than $1 million, at .8 million. This goal is dedicated to serving foster and homeless youth by including transportation, case management of our students who are experiencing homelessness, making sure that there's access and resources to counseling, and ensuring that we are tracking their academic success and academic progress in many ways. So these students, of course, we know they face unique challenges. And so moving into next school year and in the third year of the LCAP afterwards, we hope to address all their disparity of outcomes through the actions that are in Goal Five, but also a reminder that Goal One is also for our students that are foster and homeless youth.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
What percent of our students are, uh, homeless foster youth?
Thank you for the question. At this moment, I don't know if someone, um, Dr. Sosa Valderrama, who's may, maybe, um, the person that best indicated, but I can, I can share that information with you later. I can get back to you. So goal six, um, around engagement. We have nine point seven million dollars allocated in this, um, towards the efforts and the actions in this goal. Um, and really it's to support engagement strategies, uh, for, in ways, uh, so that we can support family engagement, student engagement, um, district internal and external engagement. As you heard earlier, there was an interim board goal that was mentioned around, um, holding ourselves accountable to board goal, I'm sorry, board guard rail two. And so some of these investments will go towards ensuring that we are holding ourselves accountable. So some of the investments as well are to support, uh, parent university and, um, communication platform so that it's not just my department. Again, engagement is everyone's work, and engagement is a strategy that allows all other strategies to happen. And so it's not just in, within the EEP office, but it's across our district where some of these actions will be happening. Um, so we support the foundational belief that families are essential partners in student success, and we do so by acknowledging this through goal six. Goal seven, equitable and liberatory district. Goal seven centers on building an equitable, uh, system for our students, and it dedicates four point two million dollars, uh, to actions at this, at our, within our system that are aligned to our expressed district and board commitments. Um, and you'll see here that the funding for restorative justice, uh, staffing and materials, expanding arts and access through music instruction, and a commitment to early learning through TK and EduCare are some of the examples. But this budget also, um, supports the human infrastructure through the support of intervention, um, intervention coordinators and support teams at school sites who work daily to shift not only the outcomes for, um, specific students, but really honing in on students that, if you're familiar with the California dashboard, really concentrating on students that are identified as red on our California dashboard. And so actions within goal seven address systemic barriers, and we want to be able to foster more inclusive and affirming school environments for our students. I'm going slow and pausing in between in case a question comes up. Goal eight, transformative change focuses on, again, system-level transformative change. Um, you, you've heard a lot about, well, all the ways in which we're aligning our work to our vision twenty thirty-five, our strategic plan, your goals, um, and revision of goals to come based on the discussion you had earlier. But our investments include professional development for all staff and continued support for the quality core instruction, uh, through curriculum coaching, um, and growing a number of educators that are pursuing our national board, uh, teacher certification. And we congratulate all of them that just went through that process. But it also allocates the, um, and recognize the need for physically maintaining clean and safe schools as well as making sure that our learning environments are up to date and meeting, you know, the current century, I'll just say that. And goal nine is a really specific goal, and it's something that was new to the LCAP document and, and/or process last year because it refers to equity multiplier funds. Um, and so in this goal, there are six point two million dollars that help address the disparity of outcomes for students that are attending either alternative or continuation schools. And in our case, in our district, that would be Reed and EPHS or Educational Partnership High School. Um, these allocations fund personalized supports such as wellness centers, which we know exists at all our middle schools and high schools, but they also are available to our students in EPHS and Reed. Um, college advisors, mentorship, technology, and so ensuring that resources meet the needs of the students at these two school sites. And we just want to, uh, thank the site leaders from these two, uh, site locations for the way in which they've engaged their local community to make sure that, uh, the plan is something that is, uh, viable and alive within their own school sites, but also taking a look at it and updating it as needed. Oh, oh, thank you, hot off the press. Okay, um, so again, this, this goal really underscores the belief that every student, regardless of their path, deserves a clear and supported route to graduation post-secondary opportunities. Okay, so with those highlights, and now that we've kind of reviewed, what are the allocations from, within the budget for each of the goals? I wanted to share just a little bit of information about what will be new and what the community can expect. But before I do that, Ms. Lopez, I, I just was handed information that you asked for. Um, homeless students, uh, make up seven point seven percent of our student population and foster point eight percent. That's according to twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four data.
Can you repeat those one more time?
Yes. So homeless students, uh, we are reporting that it is at seven point seven percent of our student population. And foster youth is, uh, point eight percent. And again, that's based on twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four.
The cautionary tale on that information is that it's, that we would want to provide you with the specific way in that regard how, um, students experiencing homelessness is defined.
Yes.
Because it's defined very specifically. And so as follow-up, we'll provide that additional information.
Thank you for that, Dr. Baker. So what is new in the draft? Um, we will see that, um, that the actions existed before in the first draft, but in this second draft, now they have, um, projected budgets. Um, and so all of the, each line item, each action has a, an dollar amount attached to it now. And you can find that when you go to, um, the programs or services in the action sections within the LCAP. So if you're interested in that, you can go to goal one, and then you would go to the section that says actions. And in that section is where you will find each line item, um, and how it's budgeted. The second, um, thing that is new, uh, is that the metrics have added, we, we've added current data. So whereas last year, because it was the year that we developed, uh, the LCAP, it did not have any data other than the baseline data, and some of it is now, um, all of it is there. But we also have added current, and what you will also find in each of the metric se, section for each of the goals is that it does a comparison of the baseline to year one data so that you could see if there's a plus or minus depending on which is the metric. We also see increased improved, uh, services have been, we've added some details to that. And then lastly, uh, we've shared what technical assistance, um, how it looks in our district. And so for our district, we, um, the County Office of Education, uh, or LAKO, Los Angeles County Office of Education, um, in our partnership with core districts is how we are addressing our technical assistance, um, so that we can take a look at how we're addressing the lowest-achieving students that are identified according by the state. And so we provided some description on that. The other thing that is new or that you'll see is that we've completed a goal analysis for each of the goals. That means that everyone, um, in, within our system that is close to the work of each of the actions was able to provide, um, a reflection, if you will, to include what might be some changes for next year. So it includes, um, an overall description of the implementation. Did we implement the actions as needed or as we said we would? What were some of the expenditures? Were we effective or, or not, uh, to include challenges? But then more importantly, so moving forward into year two, what would be some of the things that we can expect to see? And so I, again, thank you to everyone that contributed to that section. Oh, went back too far. Okay, let me go here. So we have some resources based for draft two. And again, I said it earlier, but we do have a comprehensive slide deck for our first draft, and we will be having, we will update that slide deck so that we now have the line items that we now have. Um, because I know our public is interested to know what is the budget allocation. Uh, the, tonight's slide deck will also be posted for our community so that they can see it as well. But more importantly, we want feedback. This is an opportunity for our community to give us feedback, and there is a Google form on our webpage. What is the webpage, you ask? It is www.lbschools.net slash LCAP. And we hope that everyone that is interested in providing feedback does so. Um, in addition to posting it on our webpage, we also, yesterday, actually, we went to DLEC and we shared with them the second draft, and we are getting their feedback. Tomorrow, we go to DCAC and we will receive their feedback. Um, because the, the, um, one of the things we are required to do so is provide a response to the feedback we get from our compliance groups. Okay? Okay, so what's next for us? Is our LCAP process has followed a very clear arc across these three phases, right? From gathering community voices, um, in phase one, to developing our, you know, our second, our first draft, and now we're in this final, uh, phase three, where we're getting inching closer to a finalized version of the LCAP. Um, and we still are asking again, once again, some feedback from our community. This timeline reflects not just compliance, but also our commitment to engaging stakeholders early and throughout this process and incorporating their input into a responsive and dynamic plan. And so the LCAP and the budget, uh, we hope will be agendized or will be agendized for the next, uh, board meeting on the eighteenth. And just some final thank yous, uh, you know, to everyone within our community, families, staff, students, and community partners for their engagement with us throughout this process. This work is a collective effort, um, and as we remain committed to partnering with you to deliver on the promise of excellence and equity for all students. And so I will pause for any questions regarding the LCAP.
I have, um, well, first of all, thank you for everything. We know that as a representative of the work being done, it's, you know, the two of you, um, uh, facing the group, but we know there are many that stand behind you who have, um, been responsible for this. Um, I want to talk about the, um, feedback opportunity a little bit. This evening, we heard from a community member who mentioned that, um, we may not be asking the questions on the survey that they want asked. And so I'm wondering if there's an opportunity for, um, community members to let us know what questions they'd like to be asked on a survey.
So yes, there's always an opportunity to not only take input outside of the survey. We will al, always accept any feedback on the LCAP. We accept all of it. Um, and there's, and I would love to engage with, um, I won't mention names, but I will, I would love to engage with folks that, uh, shared that during public comment to ask, so what are some of the questions? Because we always leave something open, like an open comment, like anything else you want to share with us, with the intent that, um, that's a space or, uh, um, a survey item for them to share, um, anything that we, they feel we did not ask and give them the opportunity to do so. But yes, I'm always open to engaging and collaborating on how to make that a better process for them.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Um, Ms. Lopez.
On goal nine, um, I know that during COVID, um, hotspots, um, were, uh, distributed to students who needed them.
Yes.
And that's actually on here as well, the technology updates, which included the hotspots tech for students without access to Wi-Fi. Are those available now for students who may need them, uh, K to twelve?
Do you want me to jump in? I can, I can answer that question. Um, so we did something a little bit different this year for EPHS. We tried something new. Um, the hotspots that we did back in the pandemic were kind of problematic. Um, they're difficult to use, they're clunky, there's too many moving parts, they got lost and things like that. So what we tried this year was, um, a little bit different. We tried, um, cellular-enabled Chromebooks. So the hotspot's basically built into the device. Um, so, you know, and, and, and also, you know, the student can use the device on campus or off campus. And I think what's different about EPHS is that, um, you know, those students have a different instructional model. They're not there every day. So they take some of their courses on campus, they take some of their courses, um, at home remotely offsite. And, um, so we, we, I think we piloted a small number of those cellular-enabled Chromebooks for students, really just to get them in their hands and get some experience for, um, how they help support their instructional needs. But we didn't really go full-scale yet on that. So it's something that we're learning this year, and, uh, we may decide to do a little bit more or scale it up, uh, perhaps in future years.
To make them, uh, available and accessible to students who need them?
Correct, out beyond, uh, that one school.
Okay, and, uh, but right now, this one school has them available and accessible to them?
Correct.
To anyone who needs it there.
Uh, there was, there was, uh, there was a number that we started with, so I don't know if, uh, how exactly the school has distributed them or whether they have additional devices, um, yet to distribute. Um, but the other, and, and I think that when you asked the question earlier, I think the other use case that we're thinking about potentially in the future, um, are the homeless students.
Yeah. Well, first off, thank you for the presentation. And, uh, as you were talking, I couldn't help myself. I had to go onto the website and, uh, take a peek here. Age-old, uh, Ronald Reagan saying, what is it, trust but verify? No, I'm kidding. No, I was, it's definitely, uh, appreciative to take a peek at the website here. And I think that it's very easy and accessible, so kudos on that. I think the piece that I was looking for more than anything, and it's been a conversation that we've had, uh, as a board, is making things easy and accessible, right? Uh, also making sure that we are transparent in our communication. Uh, to that, I think that with clear communication styles and clear community outreach, we can get as much feedback as possible so that we can get as many voices as possible to help us design, uh, the most ideal district. I share a lot to say, uh, when it comes to our, I know that we're in phase two technically or out of phase two into phase three?
Technically in phase three.
Okay, understanding that, then that means that we would, uh, be pretty much out of the thought exchange results. I'm just curious on some of those statistics, like what, what, how, how many interactions? How many, uh, folks have we communicated with?
So, um, without going into my last, uh, presentation where we did share some of that information, our thought exchange, I remember a highlight sharing with, that we shared with the board was, we're very proud of the fact that every school was represented in the thought exchange. And so, for example, that was not been the case in years past. Um, and we've been using thought exchange, I'd say now this might be our third year, if not maybe our fourth. Um, and so I think, um, a lot of that is, um, as a result of being consistent with our community, um, having, knowing that, you know, having this asset-based lens of that they can use the technology. It's just a matter of being, um, uh, being there with them and/or having them also, um, have faith in our system that we will guide them through what this, um, navigation of thought exchange will be like. And less and less, we hear from our community that this is, um, not a good platform. There's actually very little, and I'll say in my, um, experience with our community right now, and not to say that it's perfect, it's not, you know, there's probably still some challenges. Uh, but we have engaged with thought exchange in all our segments. I'm, I'm talking about not just LCAP, but also at school sites. We've enabled our parent community facilitators to use thought exchange as well, and in our parent university sessions as well. And so because I think it's so prevalent now in the ways in which we're trying to gather data from parents that they're not experiencing as many hardships. But back to your point about, do I have the statistics on how many of those, um, used it? I, we did have over two thousand, um, participants, but that equates to about thirty-five or so thousand thoughts that were shared and/or rated. And so there was, that means that one person was able to share more than one thought and was definitely able to rate more than one thought.
Okay, the, so I, I want to make sure that that we have that on record. So we've had over at least thirty-five thousand inputs on
Yes.
Some form of the budgeting process.
Correct.
All right.
Yes.
All right, I, I, the reason why I asked that question is I know that there's been a number of, uh, community conversations about, uh, community involvement in this process in regards to resources, not only making sure that they're equitable, heck, we even have that same language in our guardrails as, as a board. Um, I think that it is important, at least to me, that we not only quantify those values, but share those values publicly in regards to what they are, tangibly are as a district. And so to hear that we've had thirty-five thousand inputs.
Actually, it's thirty-six thousand.
Thirty-six thousand inputs. Uh, I think that that is, um, awesome to hear, but it wouldn't, uh, be me if I didn't challenge us for more and for more input and for more communication, as I'm sure that, uh, there's a good portion of those that, I think I remember the statistics now, that a good portion of them were students and people who worked inside of the district, but making sure that we have representation of our parents and our neighbors. And heck, I'd even like, uh, input of those that don't even have kids in the district, uh, as I think that everybody's influenced by, uh, our work here. And so I think that it's just important that we continue to keep the lines of communication open in regards to what we're doing and how we're doing it as a district.
So yes, and just to remind everyone here, seventy-four percent of those that participated, uh, were parents.
Yeah.
Twenty-one percent were students.
Okay. Great. That's great. Appreciate that.
Any other comments or questions?
I just want to thank you for your presentation.
I'm sorry. I didn't get to the second part. The second piece was this packet. I think that it was very helpful for me. And make, for me, I'm going to speak from an Eric Miller perspective. Though I obviously went on to the website and saw the breakdown of the line items per objectives. Because I'm just such a visual guy, I think I remember that was like one of our first conversations, Joe, where I was talking about like using tools like infographics and diagrams to tell stories. In all honesty, the information is clearly laid out on the website. Perfect. But this tells a story. And so I think that those that are highly interested can obviously use both pieces of information. But I'm, I was very appreciative of the storytelling piece that was laid out in this package. So great job.
Thank you. Well, I'll just take us back to goal one. I know that's going back quite a ways. But I thought I heard you mention dual enrollment somewhere, and I'm not sure where that is represented. And I thought it was goal one. I could be mistaken.
So, sorry, yes. So in looking at goal, goal one, a lot of the idea for dual enrollment, and I believe that is where I mentioned it. Let me just review my notes. So goal one does, I don't think it's here in goal one. Let me just double check. I did mention in goal one, so sorry. It's, it's just kind of an overarching. It was, it's not specifically called out as one of the actions, but it's through some of the work that's happening, for example, in 1.8 and some of the, and I say 1.8 to mean, let me go back for our community's sake. And that you want to say more?
I mean, I think the specific to dual enrollment, it would be throughout. So our counselors have a role in helping our students to take dual enrollment courses. The coordinators, the pathway coordinators, college career specialists, all of these staff that are at our high schools are supporting our students' enrollment in AP courses, enrollment in dual enrollment courses. So it's not a specific person just for that, but that, that would be work that is supported by all the folks that are listed. Many of the folks are listed in goal one.
I can just add on one piece to that. We do have that large grant from the state as well, supporting dual enrollment, which lives outside of the LCAP. And we actually do fund full-time dual enrollment counselors at our comprehensive high schools and then two additional counselors to support our small high schools.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Yes. Yes. I think Mr. Miller has more on the budget, maybe.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that once we concluded the LCAP conversation, that I can move back to the budget conversations that Margaret was bringing up here. And so my comments or, or questions maybe are more for Jill than it is for the larger team here as, and I'm going to use probably overly primitive example, but I want to make it plain here. So I can imagine in my household, if I had a situation where I recognized that I was spending more than I was breaking, bringing in, very similar to what the district is doing. There have been times where you would sit back and say, okay, what are we going to do? We are going to cut spending in certain areas, like, oh, we're not going on vacation this summer, so on and so forth. But even after some of those tough decisions, you'll probably recognize that I'm still going to have to do something. And there's a situation where you're going to have to take on potentially a second job. It'll be a part-time job. It'll be some form of additional revenue to your household to help make ends meet. And as I look at the breakdown, I was looking at, I was looking for the exact page. Once again, this is a very primitive, probably overly primitive, where we talked about five different strategies, right? On how to reconcile our budget. Huh? Twenty-three? Thank you. Uh, with, there it is. Yep. Thank you. One was one strategy on how to bring in more funds, right? And I, once again, I couldn't help but think about the 50,000-foot large percentages. You can probably tell my personality very quickly that that's all I, that's what I'm really invested in, right? So I, I heard that we had the goal of 95% student attendance, but we had 91. There's a difference about 4% there. I was curious about what that revenue percentage was. But even in my head, I still was like, I know that that's not going to be enough to help make up the large deficit balance that we have. And so I think about additional revenue streams that we can bring to the district. And I don't know, or maybe I'm asking the wrong question. Are there additional revenue streams, right? What, like, what can we do to improve some of those larger deficit spending issues?
That's a very optimistic question. We are not a business in that way where we think about, you know, fundraising to increase our budget. So improving attendance is a significant way for us to improve our revenue. And it is, it is one of the only ways.
Really?
Especially in the economy and what you heard Ms. Takahashi speak to. Margaret addressed in this slide, these areas, these are not areas that we are waiting to utilize in terms of addressing a deficit. So we have been in some planned deficit spending. When you saw the large ending balance that was accelerated for a number of reasons that were in service to our students. But these strategies are currently being used in different ways. And so we will, summer or early in fall, be back to the board with a more comprehensive opportunity to talk about how we are currently using these strategies. And we will be making significant reductions next year to address the budget shortfall that you see. It is one thing to talk about a decline that you can manage. It's another to see the steeper decline happen with no improvement to attendance. Despite, and I want to acknowledge, despite significant efforts by school staff, teachers and counselors and principals in particular, who worked hard at their attendance issues to get their lunch applications in that keeps the free and reduced percentage as high as it is, even it takes a lot of work. So I want to acknowledge that, and it's not enough to get us out of deficit spending. So we will be in each of these five areas, plus some additional areas, be back to you with a significant plan for reduction.
Got it.
So, do you want to say anything more specific than that?
Yeah. Well, I appreciate that. And obviously that this is maybe the start of a larger, very tougher conversation. But I do think that it's a great way to continue to open the eyes of the public and to hear that publicly. And I obviously want to come at this from a very optimistic perspective because that's what I am. But in the same token, the previous principles on how we go about supporting our district are what they are. And so.
I will, I will add, Eric, just that we are actively through our ledge advocacy at the state level, through the council, great city schools, through board members' participation with CSBA. We are actively engaging at the legislative level and federal level around our interest in no cuts to education. At some point, you heard Ms. Takahashi talk about a $12 billion issue at the state level. We're working to protect education as much as possible, but someone loses in that scenario. And often it is most marginalized people or families or students. And so in some way, we will be impacted by that, even if it's not a direct cut to education. In addition, what's happening federally, you heard, that's millions of dollars. And that is not millions of dollars that we can add to a general fund budget. If we take significant multimillion-dollar cuts because of what's happening federally, those programs will have to stop. They won't be something that in deficit spending that we can continue to pick up more and more programs like we were able to do for different reasons during the pandemic with COVID relief funding. So we're in a very different time and frankly, a very scary time economically when we see the intersections of federal and state policy and what's happening.
Right. And earlier I used that anecdote of how a family would help balance their budget. I wanted people to also hear, the families that are listening, that we too are going to have to do some of those tough decisions. And so I just appreciate you helping us talk through this. So thanks again for this presentation. I thought it was very helpful and very clear. I'm going to tease a little bit as that my inner architect kicked in as I saw floor plans in the very background of the I was like, are they speaking to me in, no, I'm kidding. No, I appreciate you. This is great. Thank you.
You know, it seems to me, Dr. Baker, that one of the things you mentioned was our, our families who, who sign up for, on the free and reduced lunch type of thing. And I think one of the complications is that because of the climate, you know, coming out of Washington where we have so many of our families afraid to participate in any type of official capacity where they're filling out paperwork or, you know, that type of thing, that there's a certain level of fear and suspicion. And we're at a time where we want to encourage more families to, to fill out that paperwork, submit the paperwork so that we can provide for the students. And we, and we have that challenge of the climate of fear and, and everything that we're having to fight. And so in a time where we need more participation, we may be facing less because of the very, the very things that are threatening our financial stability. So it's, yes, incredibly difficult times. So I too will thank you for the presentation and for keeping it as upbeat as possible because it is a very daunting, I guess, just a very daunting situation overall that we, we are facing some very hard times with this budget. And we, you know, with our board goals, with our, our, you know, our efforts, with our, you know, Vision 2035, with our strategic planning, everything the district does is to support our students. And when we see these numbers, we know that it's just going to be that much more of a challenge to do so. And so it's, it's quite the effort that you have put forward to, you know, kind of ground us in reality. But, but also we need to keep, we need to keep dreaming. We need to keep innovating because our students rely on us. But thank you very much. And so, Mr. Otto, you have something?
I will be very brief. Congratulations on, I think, a very, very good job done on presenting where it is that we are. And yeah, it's uncomfortable, but wait till next year. I mean, I, my, my strong feeling is that this isn't the worst of it. This is in fact the camel's nose under the tent, or I don't know how you want to put it. But we face the possibilities of layoffs, of closing schools with the trends that we're seeing. And I don't know what's going to happen, but we're, we're in a relatively good position right now based on all the work that's being done. And we'll see.
We are going to take a break before we go on to the next staff report. So if everybody could reconvene at 7:40, that gives us a little more than 10 minutes. We will reconvene at that time. Welcome back, everybody. We still have a bit of an agenda to get to, so we're going to jump right back in. So we will, we will start with our staff report, 16.2, the board goals and June data monitoring update. And so I will turn it over to Dr. Madriga.
Good evening, Board President, Board Members, Superintendent Dr. Baker, senior team members in our LBUSD community. Thank you for the opportunity to provide a data monitoring update on Board Goal One and Two. Additionally, I'd like to thank the research and student outcomes team for their contribution to our presentation this evening. This evening, our focus is on Board Goal One, reading proficiency, and Goal Two, reading acceleration. The data available for review for Board Goals One and Two come from our foundational reading skills assessment, or FERSA for short, specifically Cycle Two and our I-Ready Diagnostic Three data, which both of those assessments took place in the month of March. So let's begin with our first goal. Goal One, Reading Proficiency, which states the percentage of grade three students who meet or exceed grade level standards on the state English Language Arts Sback Assessment will grow from 48% in June 2023 to 70% by June 2028. We look at English Language Arts Sback results, which are available each summer. And our students in third grade take Sback for the first time. Our leading indicators, which will drive our discussion this evening, are foundational reading skills assessment, FERSA, and our I-Ready reading placement. And as a reminder, the leading indicators are to be predictive and they're available more than one time a year. And for Board Goal One, Reading Proficiency, we do have a target cohort. And our target cohort are students who will be in grade three in the 2027, 2028 school year. So we're actually talking about our current kindergartners that will be in third grade. And the target goal for them is that they will have a 70% met and/or exceeded on Sback. So let's dive into the data. So for our leading indicator, FERSA, we saw that in that second cycle of FERSA, grade two continued to increase by having 5% more students on track, growing to 59%. Grade one grew 2% and stayed on, on the on-track rate. Kinder decreased by 1%, however, more than 50% of our students in Kinder were on track on FERSA. And we also want to highlight that our test completion rates increased again this year by 97%, meaning that 97% of our K through second grade students tested. And that's approximately over 12,000 students. For Goal One, Reading Proficiency, we also want to look at our other leading indicator, which is our, our I-Ready proficient, or I-Ready placement. So let's take a look at Diagnostic Three, the percentages. So let's look at how did our students do this year compared to last year? So for Diagnostic Three, the percentage of students that were early on to mid-above grade level were very similar to last year. Although we had a percentage, a 1% to 2% decrease in our grades, we want to keep in mind that this is actually the second year that we administer I-Ready in the month of March. Last year, when we looked at the same data set, we were looking at March data compared to the previous year where that administration took place at the end of the year. So we all, we always want to look at comparing data sets that are available at the same time. So this is our year two. So something for us to consider, more of a question to hold on to as we look forward to later in the summer, early fall, when we provide the board a summit of report is, we want to look at how our, our students did in Diagnostic Three in March and how did our, our third graders do on the Sback? So that will be part of our analysis that we do in research to do that comparison and bring that back to the board in our summit of reporting. So I am going to pause here before we move to Board Goal Two, if there are any questions or reflections you may have.
Well, I guess I'll start out. Let me see. So when we, when we see a slight decrease in the numbers, how do we determine possible causes for that?
When we see the decrease, it, there's varying factors that contribute to that. We have to take in mind the N size or the number of students that took the test. Did that have an impact on the actual percentage? Sometimes it might have to do Sometimes it might have to do with a particular domain within I-Ready. So we'd really have to dig into which of the domains did we see a slight change? The previous year, maybe we had a higher percentage in one domain versus another. So there's varying factors in regards to what contributes to a slight decrease. When we see a slight decrease of 1% to 2%, we, we do look at that data, but it's not for us, it's just one data point. And and I'll keep reminding the board that we have other uni, or other common assessments in our district, that that's where we have to look at. What else? What else can we look at to determine, is this something that we have to be very concerned about because we're seeing a decrease? Or is this more related to the number of students that took it during this diagnostic assessment?
Thank you.
Something else that's kind of interesting to your question, Ms. Crackhead. So when you, when we look at first graders, for example, from one year to the next, there are different groups of students. But when you look at last year's first graders, 53% of them were on or above, or early or on or mid or above. But now in second grade, 55% of them. So you look at that cohort going down diagonally. 55% of those first, who were first graders last year and second grader, 55% of them are early on. Last year's second graders, 56%, this year's third graders, 61%. So it's not just looking at the same grade level, it's actually looking at the cohort going down. And and we can get much more like nerded out on on all of it, but there's, I guess, the short answer is it's not as simple as just looking straight across and making a broad decision about what's going on. There's a lot of other factors we look at.
I prefer looking at the cohort because those numbers show improvement. How's that?
And I also want to add something else to that dataset. Keep in mind, in March, 70% of our instructional weeks have occurred, which makes a big difference. So we're, and and that, that is really my reference, too. Let's, let's look at our Sback data later in the summer to see, once our students completed the whole, the whole year, how did our third graders, for example, do on the, or perform on the Sback? So keep in mind, these are March data points. 70% of instructional weeks have occurred. So kids were still learning after that. I'm going to go ahead and move us to Board Goal Two if we're ready to move on. So Board Goal Two is our Reading Accelerate, Reading Acceleration Goal, which states that the percentage of students in Grade Four through Eight scoring at the not-meet achievement level in the prior year who meet the scale-score growth target on the state Sback English Language Arts Assessment will increase from 28% in June 2023 to 60% in June 2028. And our leading indicator is our I-Ready reading growth for students who scored not-meet on Sback the prior year. So let's look at the dataset. So again, just a reminder to the board and our community that we're specifically looking at students from last year, meaning when you look at that third grade as an example, third grade last year, but currently fourth graders. So when we look at the data, we had approximately 6,693 students who, across the five grade levels, fell into that not-meet. Also, something important to note about the not-meet is that every year, we may have different students that are in that not-meet. Some students may move out. Some students may have been in the not-meet two years, and now they're, they're back, or we see a lot of movement. And so that's something to think about, that it's not the same group of students, could be some, but you may have additional students that either moved or moved out of that not-meet. So now we're going to go ahead and look at I-Ready Diagnostic Three growth from prior year's Sback not-meet students. So of the students who scored not-meet on the prior year's Sback, 25% met growth targets on Diagnostic Three this year. This compares to 26% last year and 15% in the 2022-2023 school year. So I'm going to pause there for you to take a moment and just look across the data points the past three years. So something I want to share also with the board is that Grade Four had the highest percentage of students meeting growth targets again this year. That was similar to last year. As well as something to call out is that our eighth grade maintained a large increase with 26% of their students meeting their growth targets. And Grade Five increased a 2%. So these were, our, when we look at our fifth graders, our current fifth graders, these were our fourth graders last year. And in, and in looking at last year's fourth graders, we had a higher percentage of of those fourth graders that fell into that not-meet. So seeing that they had some growth on the I-Ready Diagnostic Three this March is positive.
Dr. Madrigal, can you do a quick three-sentence explanation of the term growth targets? We were having a conversation about this earlier and how it fluctuates and how it can be maybe a little confusing to the larger public. Do you mind? Do you mind just giving a little bit more context and why it's important to these larger statistics?
Specifically to this goal, we're talking about, when we were talking about growth target, we're talking about our students that did not meet. So we look at individually, like, what is, what would we want them to make in terms of their growth, where they're at every year? So their growth target is going to help us determine, for example, in this case with our I-Ready, it's going to determine like where they started, are they making the growth needed? And when we look at not-meet students, we're not only looking just like at Diagnostic Three, we're looking at the growth they're making in Diagnostic Two. Diagnostic One, I always say, is like the, you know, it's at the beginning of the year, it's that baseline, but diagnostic, from Diagnostic Two to Three, we should be seeing growth in each of those diagnostics for our not-meet students. So that's my very simple explanation. If anyone else wants to add in?
We were having a good discussion when we were talking about interrums and trying to simplify it down to describe if a student is below grade level. If they make a year's growth, they're still below grade level. And so that stretching or growing beyond that is a way that statistically we describe acceleration. And we're trying to put it back in the, like, is it a percentage? Is it a number? We were talking about the complexity of the way the scores are, and it differs by grade level, so more complex than you could imagine, but in its simple way, like the catching up or the acceleration that's described in that, that figure. It was a good, good conversation.
Yeah, I'd think that for, not just the board, but for the greater public that are going to hold us all accountable to these targets that we set, is having firm understandings of what these definitions are. And when we hear the term growth targets, I think that there can be some perceptions created. And so we just wanted to be very, I wanted to be very clear that it was connected to reading acceleration, not just the gradual progression of going from a fourth grade reading, reading level to a fifth grade reading level. No. It is the acceleration and where they should be, and how do we get there, and how do we shrink that?
Absolutely. And to Dr. Baker's point, that is definitely a conversation even internally that we have regarding, what should we prioritize? How should we explain growth versus stretch? And it is something that in research, we've explored different ways to communicate. Internally, we can explain it, but we always think about when parents receive or caregivers receive the report, what are the ways that we can help bridge the understanding, not only in English, but our students, our parents or caregivers that speak English as a second language? So absolutely, there is more work for us to do in terms of informing and providing. And I think with the alignment of our board goals and guardrails, that is the work that's going to come alongside. It's not just giving the board goals and stating them, but it's also in partnership, providing information so that we understand as a community, like, what does that mean for my individual child or children? And I believe that that is the last data slide, so I will pause for any additional questions you may have for myself or any staff member.
I'll also make note, bringing forward our conversation from this afternoon, that this version of a board report will be going away. So enjoy it while you can, because the new version of a board monitoring report for acceptance in the future will look different. And want to thank Dr. Madrigal and her team for all that they've done. First of all, for this year's monitoring reports, and also to imagine something different that is as is prescribed in the Student Outcome Focused Governance Approach, being really true to that, and simplifying things so that anyone who wants access to them can read them, can look at them. I took a couple of the takeaways from this afternoon was even just Mr. Miller likes to talk about the acronyms that we use, but I was thinking about the displays on the website, and what would it look like to have something that you could click on and see, you know, what is, what are the foundational reading skills assessments and the other things that we talk about in a lot of educationees, so.
Yeah. I, I will say this, as we say bye-bye to this monitoring report. I understand the amount of work that it had to go into. And I can remember some of our earlier conversations about concerns about having a truly defined cohort, about having truly defined metrics, having properly timed testing. And I think that a lot of those initial growing pains are something of the past. And now we will have something that will firmly help us hold ourselves accountable as a district and hold ourselves accountable to the goals that we set moving forward. And so I just wanted to applaud you in helping us get to this point, though this is very appreciative. And I think that it gives us a great snapshot of this point in time. Looking forward to the consistency of the new monitoring, our new tracker in which we'll be using moving forward for months to come.
And I can't leave without just mentioning this, that there's been a lot of collaboration. And Dr. Baker helped me remind myself right now of the work that we've been working collaboratively with OCIPD in regards to having a progress monitoring public-facing rapport, or more a visual for our parents, where it really is going to encompass a better understanding of the assessments that we list there, who takes the assessment, and what are we assessing? So more to come, that we are scheduled to have that available to our public in the month of August. So we're very excited about that because that is also in alignment to the work that we're doing and that we discussed this afternoon. So more to come on that.
Well, I appreciate the fact that we're constantly learning and that we have expectations for ourselves as much as we have expectations for our teachers and students and families. So I appreciate the fact that you are leading us through this process, and I hope that we can live up to the expectations and continue to learn and grow. And so unless there are any other questions, or you do, yes?
And I won't ask this question again, but so for comparable districts, meaning demographically, do other people do this differently at all? How do they, how do they measure themselves? I remember not too long ago when we thought we'd achieved Nirvana because we got I-Ready, and now we were going to get data within months of when, when the tests were done, and we thought, this is great, this will be the answer, and there's something new every year. But I, I, sometimes when I'm trying to understand all this, which isn't always that, that, I have trouble, I think there's got to be ways to, to, and you just look for what others are doing and, and that we have confidence in.
I was just going to say one thing in common to your question or your comment. We, we're constantly asking ourselves, what is the fewest number of assessments that we can ask our students to take that will give us the most actionable information? You may also recall, several years ago, we were at a place in our district where we made very large decisions based on one assessment that determined whether a student would be retained or not, promote or not. And we wanted to move to more of a multiple measure approach. So we want multiple measures, we want multiple ways of determining student ability, success, but we also don't want to over-assess. And so annually, that is a process that we go through. And we say, what is the fewest number of assessments that we can ask students to take, ask teachers to administer, but that will give us the information that helps us to make decisions about what students need, to make decisions about if our schools are on track? It will be ever-changing, not, not in large swings, but we're going to always fine-tune and tweak that because we want to get it as right as possible as we learn our, continue to learn our way into the best way to monitor our student's success towards the board goals.
And I, I think not that far in the past, we used to say, well, not us, but they used to say, well, we had X percentage of our kids who went to college, or, oh, we had, they went to these colleges, or something like that. And all that stuff's gone, rightfully so. But I'm just, I'm just curious, this is an enormous amount of work, and it's getting better and better and better. The question is, are there alternatives, alternative methodology? That's, I don't know.
I would say that as an alternative to looking to what other districts do, we determine what's best for our district and what's best for our, our students. And so I appreciate that process. And, you know, maybe we look at what other assessments are available, but I don't, I don't see what other districts do as being, you know, terribly relevant to the work that our district is doing. So I think I view it maybe a little bit different. I don't know.
We, we do participate in a number of really important learning networks for us. That includes the Aspen Education Institute, that includes core districts, the, the contract that you approved tonight supports Dr. Madrigal and her team, among others, in looking at data and creating new ways to look at data that help our teachers to really, you know, have something that they can use in their classrooms. So we are out there learning, the Council of Great City Schools, a number of us participate in those networks. And so it is a, a constant learning cycle. I think of Brian has been in a number of districts as Chief Academic Officer, looking at the processes and protocols related to data, connected to performance accountability for principals. I mean, we are, we are learners in this space, and we are learners, and we are often asked to share. This team does innovative work each and every day that builds on what we do know, thinking about, for example, you were out in schools looking a different way that you were led and looking at the board goals from a student's perspective and hearing their voice related to math. That is something that will be shared, has already been asked to be shared out across the country. So we have elements of innovation and elements where we'll go and say, hmm, looks like another district is doing it this way that we might adapt something. So, yes, but trying to be our best selves, for sure. Yeah.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. I think we're ready to we're ready to invite Mr. Strumpfer so that we can have a discussion on Board Bylaws 9020 and 9021. So welcome, Mr. Strumpfer. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, Madam President. Board members, Dr. Baker, senior staff, tonight we are discussing and voting on proposed bylaws 9020 and 9021. These two bylaws actually originate from the current bylaw, 9020, and they are split into two just for cleaner and to be more understanding and be better organized. 9020 is on meeting conduct, and 9021 is on order of business. We can start with Board Bylaw 9020, meeting conduct. The proposed bylaw is separated into four parts. One, meeting procedures. Two, quorum and abstentions. Three, public participation. And four, recording by the public. If we look at, try to, oh, here we go, great. I'm gonna try to do two things at once here. So in Board Bylaw 9020, if you'll look at the edits that have been proposed, you'll note that Robert's Rules of Order, at one point, was to be relied on, and now we're going to use it as a guidance, which is what we do now. Robert's Rules of, of Order is something that's very formal, and if you're going to actually follow it as a bylaw, it, I actually think it takes away from, and, and Mr. Otto is shaking and said, yes, takes away from board power and the ability for the board to actually have open discussion. have open discussion. So I think guidance is a good word there to use. If you look further down, there was with AJ and Greg's group, there was talk of shall be adjourned meetings by nine o'clock. I think the idea behind this is for public participation, you don't want to be here till 11 o'clock at night. It's nothing to do with me being here till 11 o'clock at night. But the, the problem with such language of being shall is obvious. It's like, you know, it depends on what you have going on and there's nights, when we go past nine, there's a reason we're going past nine o'clock. So. Yeah. Which is my bedtime correlates. The, the idea behind the new language was to at least recognize that the board probably does their best work before 9:00 PM and the public probably prefers to hear the board meetings before nine o'clock at night. So an effort will be made by the board to adjourn regular board meetings by 9:00 PM is the new language that stands. There was some language in the original bylaw, proposed bylaw, that involved having rounds of questions and having time limits on board members. That was unpopular amongst you. And I think that limitation could work with some boards, but doesn't work with this board. So you can see that that's stricken. And then the rest of it pretty much stays as is. If you look down, we do codify a rule that we put in motion under Dr. Benitez's request, which is under public participation. We actually have language now that the board will provide a non-English speaker using a translator three full minutes to speak, and this will not be limited by extra time that may be needed by the translator. Dr. Benitez's concern and others of you have mentioned this too, is if you just use what the Brown Act rule is, you double the time to six minutes. But if you have a translator that's maybe going a little slow or is struggling a little bit with the translation, your, your speaker may only end up with two minutes or two and a half minutes and the translation's taking three and a half or four minutes and they lose time. So what this does is it guarantees a speaker, no matter what language, three full minutes to be able to speak. The, the other question that I throw out to the board, which is something that has come up that I talked to a number of you about, is under number four of the, the public participation, the second paragraph. We have right now, the total time allowed for public comment will be no more than 30 minutes unless the majority of the board present, present, vote to increase or decrease the time allowed for public presentation. I do want to note that, you know, my three years of experience with this board, anytime we've had more speakers than 10, there's always been a vote and it's always been approved to extend time. So I think it's a fair question for you to consider, do you still want to keep this in your bylaw? Do you want to expand it? I think it's a good idea to have a time set, a maximum time set, because you never know going in the future. If you've got 75 people out here, there may be a time when you want to say, we have to, we can't be here till midnight doing public comment. So we do need to have some kind of time limit. But I suggest maybe look at extending it to 45 minutes or maybe to 60 minutes, just so every time it happens, you're not doing what you did tonight, which is to do a quick vote and you approve it and you move on. So you can consider that. The other option is to continue to do what you've been doing, which is when it happens, you just vote to approve and it moves on.
So, do you mind if I give my comments on that piece?
Yeah, I'm just, I'm here for you guys, so I don't mean.
So first, I want to talk about the two principles that we're discussing here, right? As a board, we understand that public engagement, public comments, their opportunity to speak to us directly while we're here with the rest of the admin team often feels advantageous to the community. And if that is the feeling, then I can empathize and understand that why there are large showings. Obviously, there are other mediums in which people can communicate with us and/or communicate with the admin team to share grievances or share concerns, et cetera, et cetera. To that, one of the things that we've seen, like Wayne has shared, over at least my tenure as well, is that we set this 30-minute, I'm going to call it a 30-minute diet and nobody's abiding by it, in the sense that we as a board have consistently gone back and extended public comment time for multiple reasons. All things considered, I'm going to jokingly keep using this diet term and I'm going to say, if we're not going to abide by the diet, then let's just get off of the diet, right? In the sense that let's extend the time permanently so that it is in our bylaws and we don't have to consistently go back and request a vote, even if it is, I would prefer, this is just my suggestion and we can have a discussion about it, something substantial to the point of one hour. Now, I say one hour, understanding the impact that that can have on our board meetings. More importantly, you all know how much I love points and scores and that can mess up our scoring system when it comes to the efficiency of our board meetings. It still doesn't change the fact that we have a culture as a, as Long Beach of using the board meetings to engage with board members and admin team alike and understanding and empathizing with that culture. I think we should appease it so that we don't have to consistently go back and make the changes. But what I do like about giving even that additional 30 minutes, now we're saying, hey, we're giving a whole hour, even potentially up to two, when we're talking about agenda and non-agenda items. If we ask for an extension past two hours from public comment, it's like, what are we doing, right? Because now we're really impacting the ability to get to the business that is the board. But I would be remiss if I didn't talk about the culture that we know we have within our system, within our city, and I think that we should just respect it, put it in our board bylaws as a firm extension from 30 minutes to an hour. And if this is going to be our new diet, then we got to abide by it. And, yeah.
Well, okay.
I'll give you another reason for it, and that is that this vote to extend is, it really makes me angry because one person makes the motion, everybody else feels that they have to go along with it because then they're going to look undemocratic or something. And so I agree with you that there should be a limit. The question is, what should it be? I agree it should be in the bylaws so that we don't have to worry about it and raise ancillary problems that nobody else except people up here appreciate. And I think an hour is, is not only adequate, but it's on the verge of being too much. But I think 45 minutes is too short. So I was willing to compromise on 51 minutes and 30 seconds. I like the idea of an hour.
I would suggest that instead of extending time, which takes away from the efficiency of the meeting, and we have to remember, this is the business of the district, this is the business of the board. I appreciate hearing from the community and I would suggest, instead of extending the time in our bylaws, that we include, we include something to the effect of if we have more than 10 speakers on either items on the agenda, items not on the agenda, we can vote to limit the speakers to two minutes each instead of the three minutes because whatever can be said in three minutes can be said in two minutes with a little bit more efficiency. And it's not that I don't want to hear from people, it's that I want to hear from more people that fit into the confines of our meeting. And so there, I think that there are other ways we can accommodate more people without necessarily extending the time. And so I would like to see in the bylaws, something about giving us that option of maybe not voting to extend time, but if we have, if we have 20 speakers on any given issue, that we have the option of saying, we'll go to two minutes, everybody has two minutes. Thoughts on that one?
Disagree. For a number of reasons. One, I'm going to use a community perspective, not a board member perspective. If I show up to the board meeting, I've wrote in a three-minute speech, I've planned to write a three-minute speech, and then because there's a group of folks that are just as passionate about the same topic as I am, you want me to cut my speech? I just don't feel, for, once again, I'm speaking as a community member, not as a board member. I just feel that that would be unfair to me and I respectfully would want to keep the exact time allotment that was in the board bylaws from the beginning. And so for me, I don't, I don't think that it's fair to the community for them to have to fluctuate on what information, what they can and won't say. Like I said, I'm, once again, I'm only speaking to, in support of this change for the reason of the culture that has been created in regards to our system as people look at the board meetings as an opportune time to meet with all parties involved. I'm not saying that it's the best venue. I do believe, especially with our upcoming board community outreach plan, our work that we're already doing with outreach of the LCAP and our email systems and heck, even just showing up to the board meeting, to the building and wanting to schedule an appointment with somebody. There's plenty of venues in which you can communicate with staff and elected officials alike, but it doesn't change the fact that there's been a culture of folks wanting to come here. I think that our bylaws, though appeasing to this culture that we, that some may or may not agree with, I think would be apropos for us to do. Therefore, keeping it at three minutes with an hour and as a system that is going to visit this every year, I think that it gives us 364 days to take a look at it and revisit it again.
I was going to mention, the bylaws are a living document. So if you try something, whatever you try, if it's not working, if you're finding that the board meeting is going too long or whatever it might be, you can revisit this anytime you want to, put it back on the agenda and say, okay, this isn't working, we want to do something else. I've seen, as boards, I've seen so many different options going. There's, some boards are doing two minutes, that's just the rule now, two minutes, because they get 30 to 40 speakers every meeting and they're, they just say, okay, now it's two, it's on the agenda, it's two minutes. Others do three minutes unless there's so many people, then it becomes two minutes. Some go on for hours and don't have any limits. So it just, you know, it really is something that, you know, as a board, you kind of have to decide what you want to do. I always go back to, I remember when I, a long time ago, I lobbied for a short time at the Capitol and the head of the Senate Committee said, okay, I want one person to speak on this bill and everybody else, if you agree with them, say me too. And that's it. And so you'd have one person speak for a few minutes and then you'd have 25 people literally say, me too, and go out of line. And that obviously isn't a great plan, right, for you. But there is some, I think there's some flexibility here to try something, see if it works, bring it back if you're feeling like it isn't working, and there's a number of different options you can take.
Yeah. I know as the president of our board, the person who is focused on not only the business of the district, but keeping us focused, because Lord knows, myself, Juan and Doug can get long-winded here, I understand why you have the stance that you have.
Well, well, I am, I am concerned about the efficiency of our meetings and, you know, we've been working on this student outcome focused governance and one of the goals as laid out in the self-evaluation tool is to have efficient meetings and the two-hour mark is about an efficient meeting.
Right.
If we're allowing two hours of public comment, that's not allowing for us to center students, that's not allowing for us to handle the business or anything else that we need to take care of. I'm also concerned that if we raise those limits from 30 minutes to an hour, because we do always vote to extend time, that now we have an hour and we're going to have more speakers, we're going to vote to extend that time. And now we're going to go beyond the two hours potentially. And so those are my concerns about extending this, you know, to an hour. I, you know, of course, there are three of us left here tonight, so we, we do have a quorum, but I do, I do want to speak my piece and put it out there that all the work that we've been doing with this new model of, not new, I keep saying new, but it's not new, but new to us, model of governance, allowing up to two hours for public comment is going to severely impact our ability to have a more efficient meeting.
I could not agree with you more, but once again, I'm, my stance is focused towards the culture that has been set and we're doing some cultural restructuring as well. I do understand that it will affect the efficiency. I'm not disagreeing with you there. But once again, as we're talking about some of the cultural resetting we're doing in regards to community engagement, we do have a board community engagement plan that we're also going to be talking about later on today. I would hope, and once again, to, we have, how many millions do we have viewing today, Chris? Maybe a couple million. I would hope that the millions that are watching will use that tool as an opportunity to speak with us directly, along with still using these board meetings. But once again, understanding that culturally, we do have a history of resetting our, or not abiding by our time diet. So I would like to firmly, not necessarily do way with it, but extend it so that that is no longer a systematic issue that we have to deal with, while also taking a cultural resetting approach in how we communicate with our constituents. And once again, we will revisit this in 364 days.
I agree to, to agree with our, our other member who said an hour because I thought we could vote on this really quickly and move on to the next item, but that didn't work. But I, I, I agree with Wayne that what we ought to do is do this and then really think about it. I mean, I've talked to many of you about the fact that the National Civic League does very interesting things in communicating with the public, including how to do it at board meetings. And let's pass this tonight and if we want to change it, we can look at it in more depth. I don't, I, I think we need to get beyond this and get to some other stuff.
Wayne, can you, if you don't mind, I know we've talked in depth about the potential extension and I guess that won't even be able to happen until we make an official motion at the end. And I know that there's still one other comment that you wanted to talk about?
Very briefly, 20 seconds, I just wanted to point out on number seven of public participation, there was a question to me about why we would codify cardboard, paper or cloth placards being brought to the board meeting. And the purpose of that is to allow people to have the First Amendment right to bring their signs, but also to provide safety so that people aren't bringing sticks or metal signs that could cause issues, especially if we have a hot button issues that come up. So we want to try to keep the public safe by saying you can bring placards, but they can't be turned into weapons, they have to be something soft. And then the recording by the public is just, that's, that follows the Brown Act, so there's no controversy there.
Okay, so we need to make a motion on bylaw number 9020.
I'd like to move, make a motion to move forward with 9020 with the amendment. with the amendment in paragraph, in article four, paragraph, is that two?
Yes, it would be under Public Participation, number four, paragraph two.
Paragraph two. And the line should read, "The total time allowed for public comment will be no longer than sixty minutes unless the majority of the board presents." The majority of the, the majority of the board present vote to increase and decrease the time allowed for public presentation.
Second.
Any further discussion? We'll go ahead and vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No. That passes, no, two to one?
Yeah, in, in California, for a public school district, you have to have three affirmative votes in order to pass a motion.
So how do we proceed?
Well, it didn't, the motion didn't pass, so another motion could be made. Or you can let it go. It died in a sense that it was two to one, not three to zero. Or if you want to revote, you can revote. I mean, it's, you have a couple of different choices.
Mr. Miller? I make a motion that we approve bylaw ninety-twenty as written.
Second.
Any discussion?
I still keep my stance from the previous of extending it. As I, I just think that it's a unnecessary exercise for us to keep participating in and asking for extensions, as we know culturally, that's what we're going to do. So that's my stance.
I will, I will add, Mr. Miller, you mentioned a couple of times, in a year, we can revisit this. You can revisit this anytime you want to.
Right.
So in three months, if, like, we get to September and we have every meeting, there's a number of people. In every meeting, you're adding time. If you want to revisit this bylaw, you can do that.
Right, right.
I'm going to support the motion because I believe that the perfect is the enemy of the good.
Right.
And this is good.
Any further discussion?
I just wanted to add my thoughts on it real quick. Yeah, I, I agree that we either should keep it as written with our current, current trend of kind of extending it, or either extending it. But I don't think that we should in any way limit the time that we're already giving them, already giving for public comment. Because I think, I've only been here for some of the conversations regarding the board bylaws. But one thing I do remember being said is that we want to try to avoid limiting, limiting the public comment. And I think, especially as a student, and this is one of the ways, this is a big student platform and we often see students come to, I think they value this opportunity to come. And I, yeah, I think they appreciate the time that we have them, as well as the rest of the community, so.
So, in, in piggybacking on what you're saying and what Wayne commented as well, I understand that we also need to move forward with this bylaws conversation and move on to the next ones, because we still got a lot more to go. Technically, nothing's going to change if I change my voting ways because we'll just continue with the culture that we've been doing. But there's going to be an I told you so point in this, in a little while.
I will most, yeah, I will most likely have selective hearing at that point. Okay, any further discussion? All in favor of adopting bylaw ninety-twenty as written?
Can't we have a, a, a individual vote? I'm kidding, I'm kidding.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Alrighty.
And so, and so we, we, yeah, we pass that one. Three, the three of us with a preferential vote with the understanding that this can be revisited at any time.
Understandings are not, they're interesting, but they're, they're not binding.
Okay. So the next one is bylaw ninety-twenty-one.
Yes, ninety-twenty-one is regarding the Order of Business. This proposed bylaw is split into four sections. Types of motion, the motion process, stating a point, and amendment of rules of order. Having this information about motions in writing is new for this district. Hopefully, it avoids confusion for board members and the public during meetings. I can remember several times, and Mr. Riel probably has experiences too, where a board member, where you're voting and, or you're making a motion and you wait a minute, maybe I want to make a different motion. And it's, it's a little confusing. And this ninety-twenty-one puts it in writing as best as possible. I'm still not sure it's totally clear, but it, it does a pretty good job of explaining how it goes forward. So I'm happy to answer any questions regarding the motion process, especially when you talk about the six steps here. The types of motions, you have, you know, what everyone knows as the main motion. And then a subsidiary motion or motion to amend is, we're aware of that, when you decide to, to make a change to your own motion. Motion to table is to kill the current motion. Motion to withdraw is to take the, for instance, just a minute ago, if one of you didn't want to agree with President Craighead, you could have made a motion to withdraw or a motion to postpone, saying that you didn't want to agree with that. The motion process is a six-step process that's laid out there. And then there's three stating points you can make. It pretty much just codifies and it hopefully makes clear as to how to go forward when there's disagreement amongst the board and you're making motions. Happy to answer any questions if that was confusing.
Move to approve as submitted?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Mr. Strumford, we did that very quickly, I want you to note. Thank you very much for being here.
I appreciate that. And I appreciate Ms. Arroyo's comments tonight.
Yes.
As, as somebody who helped create the, the student role at the, in the board, I love it when the student board member talks, so way to go.
Yes, yes. I think we all appreciate that very much. The, the last thing I'm going to mention on this item, oh, actually, no. I think I'll go right into item seventeen point two, Student Outcomes Focus Governance Implementation Timeline. The, the way we had voted on the, the bylaws' schedule, we were anticipating a discussion on bylaws ninety-thirty and ninety-thirty-three for our June eighteenth meeting. But Mr. Strumford is not going to be in attendance at that meeting, but he would like to lead that discussion. So I'm proposing that we change the order of the bylaws to be looked at so we can discuss bylaws nine zero zero five, nine zero one twelve, and nine zero one three, which is a very brief one, is very small. At our June eighteenth meeting, moving bylaws ninety-thirty and ninety-thirty-three to the July meeting. Because bylaws nine zero zero five and nine zero one two are in alignment with our work with Greg Klein. He's our coach from Council of Great City Schools. And he's going to be with us at our June eighteenth meeting. He'll already be here. We're talking about student outcome-focused governance. And so I've asked if he would be available to also guide us through that bylaw discussion because that work aligns with the work we're doing with him anyway. So I believe, I believe we need to make a motion and, and vote on that change for our implementation timeline.
Was there, was there actually a, was there actually a, a vote already as to how we were going to do this?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, we have to change it.
I vote.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. So move for approval?
Second.
Any discussion?
No, I, I just wanted to piggyback on your statement on, though we're disappointed that Wayne won't be here on the eighteenth, it's important that he is for ninety-thirty and ninety-thirty-three because of the weight of the conversation. All things considered, making this change is in alignment to making sure that we have all of the proper resources in place to have a heavy conversation. So all things considered, I am in support of this change.
Any further discussion?
I have one, one clarification. If you can just restate the motion as to which items you're going to bring forward next month, or, excuse me, next meeting.
So we would be moving bylaws ninety-thirty and ninety-thirty-three to our July meeting. And then for our June eighteenth meeting, we would be discussing bylaws nine zero zero five, ninety-twelve, and ninety-thirteen.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And, yes, and then that leaves ninety-sixteen, which we, thank you. And I'd like to make a friendly amendment to your motion. Ninety-sixteen for the August meeting, meaning that we could complete the bylaw discussions before the school starts, so we can focus on student outcomes.
To confirm, because I don't have the timeline in front of me, is ninety-sixteen going to be the only bylaw that is visited in August?
Yes. Yes, it would be the only bylaw.
Sounds good to me.
Okay, so I'm going to restate it because it's a little bit confusing. So for the June eighteenth meeting, we would be discussing bylaws number ninety-oh-five, ninety-twelve, and ninety-thirteen. For the July meeting, we will be discussing bylaws ninety-thirty and ninety-thirty-three. And for the August meeting, ninety-sixteen.
Move for approval?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes three, zero, with a preferential vote, I'm going to say. Okay, thank you, everyone. And then that brings us to the second item we wanted to discuss on the Student Outcomes Focus Governance. And that would be for the, our first review of the Community Outreach Plan. So, Mr. Miller, would you like to present that?
Yeah, well, I can just talk through some of the topics. Obviously, it was part of the board packet. But I'll speak to some of the thought processes and what, most importantly, what are our next steps. Obviously, as you heard me speak to earlier, what are some of the purposes of this Community Outreach Plan? And it's, most importantly, focused towards getting communities' perspectives on not only where we are from our board goals, but more importantly, where we are as a system and hearing the voices of all constituents in all five districts. So there's a couple of things to consider logistically. They, when you think about a plan of this magnitude, obviously, there can be large turnouts, short turnouts, I mean, small turnouts. So making sure that you have a firm time allocation set in regards to how long the meeting will be. Along with those lines, I think that it's also important for us to be consistent upon all five meetings. To be consistent within all five meetings, you need to have a firm script into what will be spoken to. Also, understanding, we want to be in alignment with our equity and inclusion efforts. We want to have a translation available for all parties. The one thing that we understand will be a product of our community outreach efforts will be, and what we want to hear, sometimes there's going to be conversations less about our board goals and the impact that it's had on the students in the community. And there's going to be more conversations centered around what we'll title customer service. Obviously, we don't want to disregard those thoughts and those experiences because they're clearly important to all of us. But we want to make sure that we have a firm plan on how we address customer service issues. As a board, we want to hear them, but it's really the duties of those employed within the district to address them. So all things considered, having a firm plan on how we capture those customer service issues, how they're responded to, et cetera, is also very important to us. That is something that needs to be a defined process. And once again, to address customer service issues, we'll need to work closely with the district on how we go about doing that. Ultimately, this suggestion is a bi-monthly cycle of meetings. I've listed a suggestion of the time periods in which these meetings would occur in regards to the month, not necessarily to the date, and in which districts these meetings would occur in. Obviously, they are going to be influenced by behaviors of our city. It is going to be influenced by major holidays. It'll be influenced by district events, et cetera, et cetera. But I do think that it's important for us to keep those things in mind when it comes to the hosting of events within our respective districts. Last but not least, if you all remember my first questions when I came onto the board, and it is always the theme of my one-on-ones with Jill or with Tiffany, and it was my standard line, what does the success look like, right? In this component, I wanted to confirm, what is a win, right? And so it is obviously increased diverse participation, really rebuilding, not rebuilding, but continue to build upon our community trust. We've had a lot of success within the Long Beach Unified School District. And I think that though we have a system that folks have a lot of affinity to, there can always be more growth and more opportunities to listen, more opportunities to learn, more opportunities to support. And so all of these components are things that I would consider a win in regards to why we are going about these efforts. Most importantly, it'll be our opportunity to educate the community on the status of our board goals, what efforts we have put as a district to be successful in these, these efforts and where our community can continue to get involved in these processes. So last but definitely not least, and it's talking about what are the next steps? I am asking that each board member submit three locations in their district to support the planning process. This is something that we should share with the admin team in regards to these three suggested locations and/or targeted groups we'd like to present to. It will be the work of the admin team to help coordinate the larger plan. And for me, my homework is looking at a collaborative script. I know that we had public comment today questioning what would be the purpose of having a script when it comes to these presentations. And I would want, I think someone said, I want my board member to be unscripted or not to be beholden to a or "not to be beholden to a script." And I can respect that. I understand their thoughts in regards to the undertones of those comments. Because what they're, what I think I heard is that they would want their representative to be unfiltered, to hear their opinions. I will, I will fight against those thoughts in the sense that all due respect to the space and the opportunity for us as district representatives to get in front of our respective representatives and potentially share our views. Our views is not what we got elected for. We got elected to represent the views of our community. Therefore, this firm script is going to be in representation of what's happening in the district, but not of our views as a person or how we feel that the district should be run, et cetera, et cetera. So, having a firm script that speaks to the activities, the successes, where we are in regards to next steps, I think is going to be pertinent in regards to the consistency that I think that each district deserves.
Thank you. You know, we, we've talked a lot tonight about hearing from the community. And I, I know that there's a part in here about hearing from the community, and I think it's... Oh, I don't remember where that is now. Help me out. Thirty, no, not thirty minutes. Sixty minutes, time limit on the meetings or time goal? Forget where that, I saw that. Is it the first page? Oh, first page under logistical considerations?
Yeah, it'd generally be about one hour.
Right. Would you be open to possibly changing that to a ninety-minute meeting? I've attended a lot of community meetings when it comes to our modernization, the, you know, facilities, things, and sometimes you're just getting going in a conversation at the one-hour mark.
Right.
And so, I'm wondering if maybe ninety minutes would be...
I like that suggestion because I would agree. I think that, now thinking about it, a ninety-minute, a ninety-minute threshold, I think is just enough efficient time to have a successful meeting. So, yes, I'd agree. So, I'm comfortable with that amendment.
Okay. And then also, on the second page, where it's the bi-monthly cycle that you have laid out, it's starting in August of this year, but I'm thinking that because we have families and people still on vacation, maybe would it be possible to adjust that and move the August one to September and so on? And then we would be finishing up in July of next summer.
So, the reason why I chose the months that I did was because I was in consideration of the holiday season. But with that said, I do like where you're going with that. And what I would like to propose then is being, like, think about just moving everything up one, right? So, it would be moving the District One conversation to October, moving the District Two conversation to January, moving the District Three conversation to March.
Is there a reason we're not doing September? Or we're, oh, sorry, bi-monthly. My bad, it's late.
Right. Doing the District Four conversation in May, and then District Five would happen in August of twenty twenty-six.
Okay, and then I have a couple of quick questions. Just above that, on page two, there's a little line about tracking, and I'm just wondering, whose responsibility is that to conduct the tracking?
So, once again, we're, we're talking in principle, and I would hope that we would have representation from the district president during these customer service issues. And so, to that, it would be the role of the district representative to track those customer service issues that are reported.
Okay, thank you. And then, as you mentioned, you'll be working on the script with staff, I imagine, or?
Yes.
Is that it? Okay. And so, because...
Hopefully, my favorite English teacher will help me out here a little bit.
Okay. Mr. Otto, did you have any questions on this? No?
I did have a quick clarifying question. So, in your district, you would have one meeting per year?
So, to be clear, in the write-up, it would be two people in attendance, but I would have one specified for my district, right? And so, it could be at a location at Silverado Park, and Diana can be with me. But when Diana hosts her event at, who knows? I'm going to make up a fake space. Lakewood Mall, is that still your district?
It is.
Yes, she hosts her meeting in the middle of the Lakewood Mall, and hundreds of people show up, and Doug could be present. So, technically, it'll be two of us present at each one of these, but technically, you'll be hosting one in each part of town.
And then, are people open or able to go to all meetings? Are they restricted to just their district?
No, not at all. They are open to the community. So, everyone would be available to attend as many of these community outreach events as they would like to. The point of, of making sure that we host at least one in all five districts is for that exact reason, is making sure that we touch bases with every point of the districts that we, I mean, the boundaries that we represent.
Yeah, okay. And then, student board members can come to these meetings too, right?
Student board members need to be worried about college and everything? I'm kidding, yeah, of course.
These meetings would be very helpful, because, you know, one thing that I've had to work on is just trying to find different resources to gather my information of the student opinions on and having a place where students can come, and not only students, but any other people. That would be really useful for the next student board member to gather that information and help them.
But as you're, as I'm listening to your comments, I do, I do think that you bring up a very important point as when you go onto the district website, you can actually see all of the schools that each one of the board members represents. I think that it would be pertinent in regards to our communication plan whenever these scheduled board meetings are to happen in the district, to make sure that we blast them to all of the schools within our district to make sure that they're well aware. So, look at you, good point.
Okay. Well, if there's nothing further. Now, this is just the first review on this. We're not voting on this tonight. This is going to come back at our next meeting. So, it's still a work in progress. We'll vote on it at the June eighteenth meeting. Okay, next on the agenda, we have item seventeen point three, Board Ethics and Conflict of Interest Statement.
Have you adopted?
Yes. Actually, wait a minute, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. This is also a first review. We are not voting on this tonight. It's, it's simply a review. So, do we have any comments or changes or questions about this? If not, we can, oh, no. Okay, Mr. Miller.
Just really quickly, Wayne, can you give us any updates in regards to the board's ethics and conflict of interest statement?
I can, I can frame it for you. So, this did come out of the SOFG work and the timeline that was agreed to and passed in March of twenty twenty-five that included a few requirements. And some of the, a couple of the requirements are to make sure that the district's ethics board or ethic and conflict of interest statement includes several specific things that SOFG folks recommended. Because the district didn't already have an ethics statement in place, you've got some policy in place, but not a statement, we took the liberty to create an ethics statement and conflict of interest statement that the board members could sign that incorporate the recommendations from the timeline itself, the three recommendations, and also incorporates mostly your own board policies, your own conflict of interest rules, and some other kinds of important statements, as well as some other kinds of conflict of interest state issues that we wanted to make sure were embedded within, within the statement itself. And so, this was, the timeline indicated this would be reviewed at this meeting and potentially brought back at another meeting for consideration of approval.
And I appreciate that question because it was just a couple of months ago, I believe, that we had a separate conflict of interest policy that we all signed, and that one also covered executive staff or senior staff. And that's a, that's a different policy. That's more compliance with the state of California?
Yeah, there's a separate conflict of interest code that was updated recently in December that that's required by the state, and that was done as a resolution outside of the board policy. However, you also recently adopted an unupdated conflict, or actually, I think, a new conflict of interest policy as part of your bylaws. And this is not intended to replace that conflict of interest policy. You're still responsible for knowing that and making sure that you abide by that. This is more of a summary document that picks up some of the primary pieces in that conflict of interest as well as some other kinds of statements.
Okay. Anything else for the ethics and conflict of interest statement? Okay, then we will have another look at that later this month when we put it to a vote. Okay, so that brings us to item seventeen point four, Approval of Memorandum of Understanding with the California School Employees Association, CSEA, Effects of Layoff, Unit A. So, we need a motion.
Move for approval?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes three zero with a preferential vote. Item seventeen point five, Approval of Memorandum of Understanding with the California School Employees Association, CSEA, Effects of Layoff, Unit B.
Move for approval?
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes three zero with a preferential vote. And now, we are at report of board members and announcements. And I'm just going to announce that Alana had a birthday on Sunday. She turned eighteen.
Oh, look at you. There we go. There we go.
And, and so, do you have a report this evening?
I do. I haven't been able to give a board report as I've had to leave early for the past couple of meetings, but I will share just a couple of things. From May fifteenth, we had the last meeting of the RSVP, the Superintendent Student Advisory Committee. So, we had kind of a conference session, kind of a walk-around. There was a bunch of different stations with all the different schools and their RSVP members, and they were able to present the work that they've done throughout, throughout the year. I was, I've been participating in RSVP as well this year, so I was able to go and also present the work that I've been doing with my team member. And it was a really unique experience. I don't think I've ever been able to do anything like that. And there was a lot of district people and family and teachers there to be able to go and celebrate and to see the work that our, our students have done. And a lot of the things that they've been able to come up with have been incredible. And just going through this, this experience, I think it was really empowering to all the students to know that they do have a voice and they can make change, and they are really valued. And one of the things that RSVP focuses on, kind of one of its main pillars, is making students at its center and also making students as our center in our district. And what they were able to do with that has exactly reflected that. And our students are lifting themselves up and lifting each other up, and they are doing some incredible things. So, thank you to all the students who participated. You did a wonderful job. And thank you to Dr. Baker and Dr. Twal for hosting RSVP and allowing this platform to exist for our students.
Thank you, Alana. Mr. Otto?
My goal, my goal was to, in deference to Mr. Sumfer, who just worked hard to get us to pass a policy about ending meetings before nine o'clock, and now it's after nine o'clock. So, there's some irony that if there was actually a newspaper in town or if Kim Grobody had not retired, that would be better for the newspaper to do that. But I have no report tonight.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Miller?
I heard you used the term "Dr. Twal." I forgot. Favorite teacher doctor now. Look at him. Well, there's a couple of things I just wanted to highlight. One, I know we already talked about the new assignments for employees in leadership positions. That's always a big deal. I know the impact that teachers have on our students, and it's literally a, the biggest influence. I will say, with that same fervor, the biggest influence on campus cultures are the leadership. And so, the new assignments of these new leaders and new roles, I've just wanted to personally congratulate them as we understand the importance of great campus cultures throughout our district. And I think that that is really one of the largest highlights of being a part of the Long Beach Unified School District. So, a big kudos to all of those who have moved upward in position. I know there were a couple of lateral movements, some that even I had a little teary eye about. But all things considered, I wanted to give a big congratulations to them all the same. We had the opportunity to participate in the spring celebration. Couple of, what was that, like, last week? Yeah, wow, yeah. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to make the first one. So, technically, for me, this was my first opportunity to participate. Obviously, I saw the great photos from earlier in the year, so I was a little jelly. So, getting to participate this year was fantastic. I, I think that, I'm thinking about our, our values in regards to affirmation. It's kind of an unwritten value, but it is one all the same. I think that we, as a district, do a great job of showing our appreciation to good people. My dad's age-old saying is, "You take care of those that take care of you." And those educators, those new doctors within our district have taken very good care of our littles, and I think that it is only appropriate for us to acknowledge all of their great work. And so, to have a celebratory event outside of the board meetings is fantastic. And so, I was very, very excited about that. I was able to attend, to me, probably one of the most iconic moments in my very young political career, and that is the groundbreaking for Long Beach Poly High School. I will say, on the moments that I've truly, truly enjoyed in this role, being there for their groundbreaking was a big one. As, since I've been here in this position, though Poly, the home of Scholars and Champions, they've had a lot of success, and we tout all of the great work that they've done, both from a performance standpoint academically, but also athletically. And we'd also be remiss if we didn't recognize that a lot of the, let's call... a lot of the, let's call it, brick and mortar resources that they have were unfortunately quite outdated. And so I know that there's been a lot of cries from the community and from the, uh, students in particular that, hey, we need to do something about this campus and to see that we're finally, uh, gonna get that work started this summer. Um, I'm just really, really excited about it. Wanted to give a big shout out to, uh, Dave Miranda and his whole team as, it's a big deal, really, really big deal. And I want to thank the mayor for coming out and, uh, it was a little, we had the cheerleaders there, and it was a, it was a great event. So, uh, congratulations, uh, to Poly and all of their alum. Uh, my mom, who's a Poly high graduate, when I told her that they're gonna be rebuilding the skit, the school, uh, she was a little teary-eyed, as, you know, Poly folks are very passionate about their, uh, Poly High School. And so, a lot of memories have been created there. Um, so, all things considered, congratulations to both the current, um, Poly attendees and, uh, the Poly alumni for the great buildings that they'll have in, uh, just a few short years. Uh, last but not least, I really wanted to send a call to action, often to, I often have calls to actions to the admin team or to us. Uh, this time, I'm gonna ask for the help of our parents. And I say this because, uh, we're getting close to the summer. And the summertime, especially in Central and West Side Long Beach, are always super hot, and I'm not talking about the temperature. Uh, it's a lot of, uh, unfortunate activities that have occurred historically on these parts of town, for reasons that sometimes are outside of the realm of, uh, manageability for a system like the Long Beach Unified School District, and heck, sometimes even for our city. Uh, but I know the biggest influence on, uh, keeping our young people safe are our parents and their ability to keep them active. I know that the district has a number of summer activities going on from, uh, Sankofa Parent Village, uh, summer activities to, there's Freedom School. I know that Long Beach City College has some summer, uh, programming going on. I know our parks have free summer programming. Uh, just keeping our kids active, keeping their, uh, their brains active, uh, I just, the summers are always just a difficult, uh, difficult time, and so the more that we can, uh, keep our kids active and, uh, keep our kids, uh, participating in, uh, quality activities, I think the better, uh, off we'll be in regards to keeping them protected, keeping them safe, and keeping them out of harm's way. So I'm going to implore our parents, the millions of parents that are watching, please, if you haven't already came up with a plan on what you're going to do for your son or daughter, uh, this summer, please create one. Uh, please reach out to your local, uh, community-based organization, your, um, your campus, your church, uh, as, uh, the more we can keep them busy, the better. That'll be the end of my report.
Thank you. Thank you for mentioning that. It's very important that we keep our kids safe. Yep. Um, I'm gonna, um, just kind of quickly go through a list of things I wanted to mention. We had open houses, Public Schools Week and open houses, so thank you for all the teachers and administrators that made that possible. I know that it's a matter of putting in extra time and effort, so thank you for that. Thank you to Jen Prager at, um, at Edda, who put on a production of The Jungle Book. I was able to see one of their, um, preview performances. It's, uh, always very exciting to see our littles on stage. It's, um, surprising and amazing to see them performing. They hit their marks, they're singing, they're dancing, they, you know, there's choreography, there's, um, you know, beautiful sets, so that's always a, a treat to see that. Um, I was able to participate in Civics Day that was held at, um, Jordan this year. Last year, it was at the Michelle Obama Library, and, um, I want to thank Alan Shepard for inviting me. The, um, the event, um, included students from, um, Jordan, Milliken, Poly, Renaissance, and it's, it's like civics in action. They, they have groups that come up with projects, um, and it's, it's not just a research project or, you know, a, a reading assignment and you write a report. It's an actual hands-on. They come up, they, I, uh, they identify a need. Um, one Renaissance group identified vaping as an issue, and so they set about to do something about it. So it's all about taking action and that type of thing. Great program. I'm glad we're part of that. Um, and then, I'm gonna say it was just last week, the Classified Employee Event? Was that just last week? Was that two weeks ago? Class Chella, is that two weeks ag-? Two weeks ago. So, um, by the time I'm done, it'll be three weeks, but, um, so I just want to congratulate our, our Classified Employees of the Year. We had a tie this year. So that, that means that there were so many incredible classified employees, and I believe it was a record number of applica- or, uh, nominations for the Classified Employee of the Year. And so, um, Craig Foster from Duplicating Services, he's our Duplicating Services Supervisor, was one of the winners, and Melissa White Cotton, she's a recade at Newcombe. So congratulations to those two. It was a very fun event. Those, those events are really great. We saw that on the video.
You have three minutes.
I vote to extend time. Um, and then, oh, I know, here, here was last week. California Distinguished School Event at the Disneyland Hotel, where, um, a couple of our, three of our schools were recognized. CAMHS was recognized with, as a National Blue Ribbon School, and then Fremont and Patrick Henry were recognized as a California Distinguished School, so congratulations to those schools for that. And then Saturday, and I'm gonna say it's just this last Saturday, was our inaugural, um, uh, Asian Amer- no, okay, AIPI, Asian American Pacific Islander Event at Cabrillo. Absolutely fabulous. It was wonderful to highlight some of our own staff members, um, are, that are, that are here this evening, speaking to the crowd and, um, and just the appreciation for cultures maybe outside of our own that are rich in, in, you know, music, dance, food, history, all of that. Very celebratory event. So thank you to everybody who made that possible. And then, um, finally, I just want to mention, I was able to attend an event yesterday morning, yes, yesterday morning, at Homes, and it was their night market event. Uh, they use a little patch of grass. They have, um, you can just picture it with little, um, I guess, table set up around the edge of the grass. The kids do a project on different, um, cultures. It could be, uh, you know, a country or whatever, but each student, and they're third, fourth, and fifth graders, each student has a tie to that country that they're talking about. So if they're talking about Nigeria, they have, um, you know, ancestry, sometimes they're first-generation American, you know, and they're talking about, um, you know, some, some aspect from that country. So involved in all that, they have food, so thank you to the parents and teachers who prepared food. You can walk a- around and actually, it's like a Taste Around the World kind of thing. It was fabulous. And then there were performances, so, um, dancers. There, there was, um, a group of Filipino students, um, doing a dance. There was a Samoan girl. She performed all by herself out in the middle of this grass. Anyhow, very impressive. I just want to, um, give a shout out to the Homes teachers that create this event, that, um, encourage their, their students to take pride in their, um, in their, I, you know, identities, whatever they may be, and it's also a very fun event because as an adult, you get to go around and talk to the kids. And to me, that's a highlight, and, and I, um, appreciate that type of activity. And going back to the Civics Day, that's what it is too. The adults go around the room and talk to the students about their project. I think anytime we can refocus our energy and, and center the kids, brings us back around to what, you know, what we should be doing. Um, and with that, I'll move to our superintendent for your report.
Uh, I, I would not be able to go home tonight if I didn't say this. So, one good thing that happened to us last week was last Saturday, my, uh, grandson, uh, won the state title in the half-mile. I've been sharing this for over a year now, uh, his career, but, uh, with about two hundred yards left, he was, uh, seventh. Uh, and he passed everybody and he won, and, uh, so he's now the state champion in the half-mile, so.
Congratulations.
And I can go home now.
Well, I'll be quick, but also want to just express some gratitude and celebrate, um, the first of our Asian American Pacific Islander Heritage Celebration, and thank Equity Engagement and Partnerships Office and a group, a very diverse group of Asian American Pacific Islander staff who participated in planning the event. I know several of you were able to attend, and I, um, stood with pride alongside senior team members in Dr. On and Ms. Takahashi to know that in our district, representation, including students, can look up to members of the senior team who represent, who are represented as Asian American Pacific Islanders. So thank you for standing with me and for what you represent for our students. Um, we recently, I attended the, along with Mr. Samuels and several others, the Ports Celebrating Education Evening, where three hundred and fifty thousand dollars of scholarship money was given to our students. Really incredible opportunity to, um, to see our students receive and to hear about their accomplishments, and in particular, Yamalet, who was on Raising Student Voices and Participation, a student at Jordan High School, was their keynote speaker and just was, um, absolutely beamed with pride as she shared about her accomplishments, but also the hardships that she had overcome, and what a scholarship means to her as she proceeds into college. So just wonderful to see other student leaders in the world, um, representing themselves and our schools so beautifully. On Sunday afternoon, I joined a really wonderful team at Poly High School, and I will just name three of them, led by Ms. Roselli, um, along with Ms. Switchenberg and Mr. Hopple, who are teachers of students with disabilities at Poly. They held a prom send-off for their students who were going to be attending the prom. Uh, many of the students were there with their families, many went on a bus to the prom, and others experienced the prom right there for them in a way that was just beautiful and respectful and exciting. There was dancing, and there was music, and there were bubbles, and, um, an incredible effort that actually, the funds were raised through a GoFundMe that Ms. Roselli leads every year, um, that I know many staff and others in our community participate in so that our students can have just the time of their lives, supported by caring adults from their school. In addition to the teachers, there, there were others that were there on staff and just really appreciated, um, the opportunity to be with them. We have Hughes Middle School, eighteen students, and chaperones will be off to Carnegie Hall, as has been an opportunity for some of our other students. Um, you may see an article that comes up in the New, in the Long Beach Post about those students, and just a wonderful opportunity for them to end part of their school year in Carnegie Hall and in New York City. So, love that. Couple other highlights, um, we recently had four schools combined together at Jordan High School to her, hold the first of its kind, a Northside Connect Carnival, where Lindsay Hamilton Lindberg joined Jordan and had a, just a, an afternoon where students could tour the labs and hear from other students about what it's like to be a student at Jordan. Most of the students, eighth graders who were going to be attending at Jordan, that were there, just loved going into the labs where their pathways will be centered, hearing from other students. There were carnival activities and community-based organizations. So just a wonderful effort led by the four principals together to, um, really elevate what it means to have pride in the North Side and to come together on behalf of their students and families on Memorial Day weekend, by the way. Time out of their schedules, and then a number of staff members from all of the schools, but in particular Jordan, hosting a wonderful opportunity for families. And then just two more things. One, celebrating some sports accomplishments in the spirit of Mr. Otto. We had the Poly High School Girls Softball Team win the CIF Championship. So just a wonderful opportunity for them. I believe it's the first time for them to win the CIF softball championship. And speaking of Wilson High School, our girls' track and field for the third time has won the CIF State Championship. And so that has been all on social media and being celebrated in our community, and want to just amplify that celebration. Um, the spring employee recognition celebration was already spoken about. This week, we also, thank you, board member, um, Craig Head, attended our strategic planning quarterly meeting where we reflected on the progress of our strategic planning efforts in service to the board's goals and, um, made plans for how we will refine our work across the district. And then lastly, while she is not in the room any longer tonight, I just want to express gratitude on behalf of our team for Letitia Rodriguez. This is actually, she was here. Um, this is actually her last board meeting before her retirement, and just wanted to acknowledge that momentous occasion after three decades of work in Long Beach Unified School District. She has been, um, an absolute stable force in this room and in service to the board and all that takes place on a very busy board day, and so just really want to express our appreciation for her. So with that, I will turn it back to President Craiget.
Thank you. So, um, I think we'll adjourn in her honor, um, just recognizing the service of Letitia. I don't even want to talk about her not being around, um, so I'm not going to, other than, other than we're gonna adjourn the meeting in her honor. But, um, that concludes the business of this meeting. Thank you, everybody, uh, and, uh, if there's no objection, we'll adjourn. But thank you, everyone.